Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the April 3, 2012 meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of East Hampton. Tonight, we have three public hearings, and after that, we will have a short work session as we have a long work session at next week with no public hearings. So we have three public hearings, as I said, tonight, and we'll start with the first one, if everyone's here. The first hearing tonight is that of Dana and Andrew Stern. This is a 12,628-square-foot parcel at 8 Treasure Island Drive, Beach Hamptons, Section 4, map number 1319, block 2, lots 1, 2, 3, 39, 40, and 41 in Amagansett, tax map number The description of the project is to construct a 512-foot, square-foot swimming pool and spa within town jurisdictions of beach vegetation and within front yard setbacks. The relief sought is a Natural Resources Special Permit pursuant to Section 255-4-20 of the East Hampton Town Code, and one variance is required for this application. A variance of 10 feet from 255-11-10 of the Town Code is required to construct the pool 20 feet from the front yard lot line where 30 feet is required and any other relief necessary. This is a B residence zone, AE flood zone, elevation 10, and sucra class is a type 2. Counsel, do we have an affidavit service and posting?
All appears to be in order, and the same up to the board for inclusion in the file.
Okay, this property is in Amagansett, as I said. We'll have a field report from Mr. Cirillo, our Amagansett representative.
Good evening. Yeah, I drove out there, and it was duly posted. This is an interesting situation because it actually fronts three separate streets. So there are three separate notices, one on each of the streets. I just took one picture. This is on the north side. That's the Doon Hill Road. These two pictures go together. They're from the front, so you can see where the pool's going to be in the back. Then, this picture's taken looking south, looking north, in the back. It's got a large fence around it, so I took most of these pictures from outside the fence before I figured out how to open the fence. That's looking northeast.
This is where the pools go?
That's where the pool's going to be, right there. And then, if you put these all together, you can see they all link up. Pool location is over here. This is looking southwest. There's all duly posted, and there was nothing unusual to report there. The map matched up. I took the survey with me and counted off the 20 feet to where the pool would be, and I marked it on those pictures so you can see where it would be. I drove down Doon Hill Road and then Clinton Academy Lane, both of which are dirt roads. And this is fronting Treasure Island Drive, right there around the corner. It's unusual in the sense that there are three separate roads fronting it. So that's the only thing that I think is of note, that people may want to pay attention to. I think the pictures are self-explanatory, but I'm happy to explain anything.
Any questions for Mr. Cirillo with regard to his report? If there's no questions, Mr. Hammer, assume you're the agent for the applicant.
Yes, I am. Good evening, Chairman Walters, members of the board, Richard Hammer from Beyond Don Hammer. I'm here representing Andrew and Dana Stern tonight. I think I'm going to try and keep my comments pretty brief. I understand there are some members of the public, and I don't want to in any way diminish anything that they might have to say. But I did want to point out a couple of things about this property that are unique. Don Cirillo did mention, in fact, that there are three front yards. That's not entirely unique, particularly in this area, but it is a fairly unique standard. As a matter of fact, I remember when I was working for the town, we had discussed different types of zoning code amendments, and one of the code amendments was going to apply to properties that had multiple front yards. Essentially, in certain municipalities, if you have multiple front yards, you can pick what is designated as your front yard, and then that sets the other yards, its sides, et cetera, to deal with this unusual situation. So in this particular instance, having three front yards, another thing that's kind of unique about it is most of the roads in that area aren't paved. Even Treasure Island Drive, as you go down, it is a fairly narrow road. I believe it is paved past this property, however, the other side of it is dirt roads. And if you look at the survey, you'll see between the edge of what is the improved surface of the road, which, as I said, is more or less a, I think it's just a sand surface, and the property line, depending on which road you're looking at, there's between 10 and 30 feet of additional property. So the road frontage here, these are private roads, and they're never going to be improved to town specifications, or certainly, I think that's probably a fairly significant bet here, is that they wouldn't be. That, you know, there is additional buffer area that's incorporated as part of the road bet. The other things I did want to point out, we're in front of you tonight asking for a side, or a front yard setback variance, which, as you look at the pool, the house fronts on Treasure Island Drive, the front yard setback variance that we're asking for is from the Clinton Academy Lane side of the property, where we propose to be 20-foot, which is actually the required rear or side yard setback for an accessory structure. And it's just basically not practical to try to cite a standard pool. And this is a small pool. I think it's 16 by 32. But to be able to comply with the front yard setbacks would create a pool essentially, I would call it a large hot tub essentially, if it's 10-foot wide. So there is a little bit of practical difficulty caused by the three front yard setbacks on the property. The other thing that we're requesting from you is a Natural Resource Special Permit, and that's because there is beach vegetation in this area. Some properties have more than others. Some are more manicured than others. However, I would agree that any areas that were disturbed from the construction activities would in fact be revegetated with a re-veg plan approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. The third item I just wanted to speak of is, you know, I remember not too long ago, we used to say, well, a pool is a luxury item, as maybe I've gotten a little bit older, as I have friends who have small children. A pool isn't so much a luxury item at this point. It really is a way that a family can spend time together in a location that's a controlled environment. In this particular instance, I know they have a grandmother who loves to spend time with the children. Sometimes it's just not practicable to say, well, you could walk down to the ocean. That doesn't always seem to be a great way to get family time, because not all the family members are ably-bodied and have the same ability to hang out in the sun. You know, it's basically, I think, even though it is in some respects a luxury item, it's becoming more and more an accepted family practice and a way to have a controlled, safe environment for your children where you can supervise them, and other family members can enjoy their company as well. So with that, I would just open myself to any questions of the board, and then would like to hear what the public has to say. Perhaps we can address some of their concerns.
One question, Mr. Hammer. This is a pretty busy survey. There's a lot of stuff on this survey. And I looked on the survey to find the coverage calculations, and I didn't see any on the survey. Are we pretty sure that this, and I know that question would probably come up later because it was in one of the letters submitted by one of the neighbors. Are we pretty sure that we're in, and maybe it's a question from Mr. Borsak also, from the planning department, are we in compliance with the coverage calculations here? Because it doesn't show it on the survey.
You know what? I'll have to look through my file. 50% is a total lot coverage calculation.
Right.
And that can be very tricky to your eye to try and ascertain.
That's true, and I've looked at the survey, and it's pretty busy.
And on its face, you'd say, geez, that looks like we might be at the 50% coverage. However, there are structures on there that would not be allocated towards coverage.
That's correct. But I just want to make sure that that's not another variance that would have to be asked for, because I know it was brought up by one of the neighbors, and when I went to look at the survey, it doesn't show the coverage calculations like many of the surveys.
And what I'll try to do is, I'll try to look through my file to see if I have a survey that does calculate coverage. I'm fairly confident in stating that we would comply with coverage, but I can't definitively state one way or the other.
Fair enough.
Other than it hasn't been raised in the planning process, and I think it might have been addressed by an earlier survey.
Fair enough. Any other questions for Mr. Hammer?
Just a quick question. You were talking about designating a front yard. Their address is 8 Treasure Island Drive. Have they designated that to be the front?
Well, that was an idea, and it never came to fruition in the town of East Hampton. But in certain municipalities, exactly, that's what you would do, is designate Treasure Island Drive as your front yard. That would make all, this side of the property to be a rear yard, and side yards would be on the other two. As a matter of fact, just, you know, I find zoning law very interesting. In Sagaponik, for instance, you have a similar ability to do that, where you get a front yard setback or a side yard setback that has to be a minimum, but you can, you have to reach a maximum. So say if it's 80 feet, you can set one side yard at 50, and the other one can be at 30, basically, as long as you comply with the minimum. So there's more than, there's a lot of different ideas about how to best regulate for unusual properties and allow people flexibility. It just so happens our code calls a front yard, whether it's improved, open, paved, or not, to be a front yard. I think in this case, those three roads that it fronts on, Treasure Island is clearly a paved and improved road, meets most people's reasonable definition of a road. As you get farther around the side of the property and you're more on dirt driveways, you know, they have more of a driveway appearance, but under the East Hampton Code, there's still front yards, and a front yard setback would be applicable on all three sides.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Hammer? Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to speak with regard to this application? Yes, sir. Step up to the microphone, state your name, spell it for the record.
My name is Joshua Jablons, J-O-S-H-U-A, J-A-B as in boy, L as in Lloyd, O-N as in Norman, S as in Sam.
Very good.
My mother taught me to teach, say it that way. I've been sticking to it ever since. So thank you for this opportunity. I've never spoken in front of a ZBA of any jurisdiction, and I'm not an attorney, but I do own property, a house, across the street, across the front yard, on 8 Doon Hill Road. So we are across from the property where the variance setback is being requested. I submitted a letter, and I thank you for taking the time to read the letter.
He doesn't need a variance from Doon Hill.
Yeah, just say.
From Clinton. Just to correct you, you said he needs a variance from Doon Hill Road. He doesn't need a variance from Doon Hill Road.
The, our street address is 8 Doon Hill Road, but our frontage, no confusion here, we are not on Doon Hill Road.
Oh, you're on Clinton.
I can't explain this.
You're on Clinton Academy.
We bought the property. We didn't design this. We are on Clinton Academy, as is my neighbor, Peter Geyer. So our addresses are actually Doon Hill Road, even though we're on Clinton Academy. Part of the charm of this idiosyncratic neighborhood.
He needs a variance from Clinton Academy.
Correct. But we are facing what they are asking to be closer to.
Then go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. And I would like to ask some questions about the actual law in East Hampton. I also wish things were different, but I'd like, I'll stick to just what is. Regarding the notice, can I ask the town attorney regarding the tax map, the number of people who would be adjacent or across the street? Because I looked at the file, and I only saw the names of six notices, and yet I can count 10.
Mr. Hammer did actually notice the proper parts on the sheet that you're speaking of. I had the same concern. There wasn't as many properties listed that needed to be noticed.
So you're satisfied that there were 10, even though the file doesn't show it?
I believe there's space for six on the application, or may we attach it?
Yeah, I know. I looked for the addendum, and I asked the clerk, but they said no. Okay, moving along. So the survey from 2008 and the survey from 2011 do not show lot coverage, and there are other discrepancies. For example, according to the East Hampton Town Code, 255-11-45, a private, single-family residence will have two parking spaces off-street, which would mean off of, on their own property, not in the right-of-way, and that would be a total of 360 square feet. But the survey, neither the 2008 nor the 2011 survey seem to show that. Is that a missing item from the survey being submitted?
The survey does show, what we have in front of us that was updated on 12/23/2011, shows a gravel driveway off of Treasure Island Drive.
But is that within their property, or is that off-street?
Looks like it's in the street. It could be in the street. I'd have to get an interpretation on.
Yeah. Again, I'm only looking at the one that's dated October 13, 2011, which was part of the file this afternoon. If there's a later survey, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, we received it December 28, 2011, and it was updated only with regard to the pool on 12/23/2011.
Okay, so it would be the same information that's here?
I believe so. I think the only change on that was the pool.
I go back to that question. According to the Town Code, we're all required to have 360 square feet dedicated to off-street parking for our own purposes, whatever the purposes are. The code is the code, and I don't see that here. So my question is, how accurate is this survey in terms of lot coverage? Is everything noticed there? In addition, other missing elements, the proposed pool is listed at 16 by 32 with a spa inside. Does that pool include any coping or decking or any other?
Well, I think coping is included in the size of the pool. It doesn't, the survey doesn't show any additional decking around the pool.
Well, when I do the math, the size of the pool requested is 512 square feet. So that would mean it's a 16 by 32 interior space, and that would mean it would be a very thin-wall pool. So because this is a postage stamp-sized property, and they're trying to squeeze a lot of stuff on it, I was just asking, does this survey correctly show all of the coverage? And therefore, what would be the coverage calculation? Other things that seem to change from 2008 to 2011, the septic system seems to have lost its expansion pool. If you look at the 2008 survey and you look at the 2011 survey, the circles seem to have disappeared.
I actually don't have a, I don't have a 2008 survey.
It was attached to our letter.
Oh, okay.
And actually, another resident wrote a letter that had it.
I think Mr. Hammer will answer that, as I've already indicated to him the coverage questions, and I think he'll be able to answer those questions for you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and the pool equipment would also have a pad. The test hole, the elevation, right now, the application, the public notice says 10 feet, but when I look at the 2011 survey, now again, I did not, I do not have access to the December update, but the October one that's in the file as of this morning in Town Hall, it shows that the actual elevation ranges from below 8 feet, crossing through 8 feet, crossing through 9 feet. It just almost kisses 10 feet. So again, a question regarding this application in terms of its being complete or incomplete. How are they planning to deal with the elevation profile that's described below if they're only working with 8 feet or even less, as shown in their own survey? It'd be a very shallow pool. Okay. And the test hole itself was done in 2008. Is that still the correct water level?
It's showing it on the 2011 survey that we had. Again, I think Mr. Hammer can answer that question.
Right, okay. So again, my question about the completeness of today's application is, is the test hole correct? Is the water level correct? Because that affects as well the, whether this pool's going to float away. Let's say, okay. So those are the three things that I have questions about in terms of the completeness of the application, and if it's possible, I've traveled a bit of a distance, as have some other neighbors, so I appreciate continuing to consider this application on its merits. However, if it's possible to keep this application open so it can review what the lot coverage and other information and not have to do it in a rush, that would be much appreciated.
Okay, well, after we've heard everybody speak that wants to speak and hear from Mr. Hammer again, we'll talk about the applicability of keeping the record open.
Okay. Okay, and then the other items that are, my other objections are in my letter, and I won't read the letter to you, but I appreciate you taking the time to read the letter.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Just step up the mic, state your name, and spell it for the record.
Good evening, chairman and members of the zoning board. My name is Betty Mazur. I am a longtime resident of Clinton Academy Lane. My full-time home is south of the applicant's property, which abuts on Clinton Academy. For those on the board who are unfamiliar with this somewhat hidden section of Beach Hampton, let me review the geography, which will emphasize why some of us are a little upset about this application. Treasure Island Drive forms the eastern long leg of a long rectangle. It runs south to Marine Boulevard, then west to Clinton Academy along Little Cross Street, and then, oh, it goes south down to Marine Boulevard, then it goes west along Marine Boulevard and up Clinton Academy Lane, and then south onto Doon Hill, which is a very short, is the short side of the rectangle. I never was good in geometry, so forgive me. The important thing is that, as Mr. Cirillo said, the, Treasure Island Drive is a sort of macadam road. It's paved, and Clinton Academy and Doon Hill are rustic dirt roads, which are beloved by the residents. The lots here are in general small, and the homes are close together. There is a beach, this is a beach community with an abundance of beach vegetation and former dunes. In fact, I used to pick cranberries for my Thanksgiving dinner just across Clinton Academy Lane from my house. Even as new homes have been built, this north section of Clinton Academy has been left wild and free by previous owners, providing a very special, lovely, green rural belt for the enjoyment of the whole community. My primary concern with the subject of tonight's hearing is the erosion of adherence to and respect for East Hampton's Town Codes. When the applicant applied for a building permit, it was agreed as a condition that the area now under consideration for a pool was to be left natural. Unfortunately, that area was cleared, as were substantial stands of indigenous vegetation along Clinton Academy and Doon Hill. This over-clearing has opened up the roads in a way that eliminated the natural green buffer that shielded homes from the road, and beach vegetation was cleared without a Natural Resources Special Permit. It is very difficult for us who believe so strongly in East Hampton's zoning codes to watch them be weakened, which is what happens when restrictions are ignored. This is a very fragile area. It's an AE flood zone, and it needs all the protection that the code so wisely affords. The serious floods of the past few years graphically demonstrated to us, again, the extremely high and rising water table on which we live. We residents rely on you, the ZBA, to maintain the code for our protection and for the quality of life that our rural environment has provided us. So the question here is, is this proposed project appropriate for such a constrained parcel which has already impacted the neighborhood? Thank you very much for your consideration. And I have also a letter that I would like to read into the record from another immediate neighbor. "We are writing in reference to the application by Andrew and Dana Stern for a Natural Resources Special Permit and Setback Variation. We live directly across Doon Hill Road from the Sterns and have observed their construction project since its inception three years ago. I, Amy O'Brien, have also worked for the architect who designed their house, so I have firsthand knowledge of the process and the procedures that have gone along with this project. I would firstly like it to be strongly noted that as of today, March 28, we have not received any notification."
Ms. Mazur?
Yes.
I think we have that.
You have that letter.
We have that letter in the record?
You do have that.
Yes, I did. We received it last week. And I wanted to make sure it was the same one you were reading.
Right, okay.
And I believe it is.
Okay.
Second paragraph starts with, "I would first, I would firstly like to strongly note."
Yes, okay.
You do have that.
Yes, they wanted to be here tonight, but it was impossible for them.
I'd want you to have to read the whole letter if we already, if we already had it, so. Did you, did you have something to submit?
What I do have from them, which I will give to you, is some photographs that they took, which may not be the same as the other, as Mr. Cirillo, as they might give you more visual impact. And then there's another letter. I don't know whether you have received it or not, from someone else who wanted to be here but couldn't make it. It's very short. "Dear Mr. Walter, Chairman Walter, I'm writing you regarding the application for variance. As a neighbor and resident for over 30 years, I wish to voice my disapproval for the variance and Natural Resources Special Permit. Ours is a small rural community with unpaved roads and a distinct beach community heritage. Anything which will upset that balance and destroy, such as the proposed variance, is not in keeping with the area and destroys that which the vast majority of the residents wish to preserve." And that's from Frank Abada Marco, who is on, his address is Block 12.
I didn't want to stop you again, but we have that one.
You do have that one, okay. All right, then I will only hand into you the photographs that were taken by the O'Briens.
How many photographs do you have there? All right, you want to just date and sign them?
They have dates.
They have dates? Yeah, since you put them in the record, why don't you sign them, and we'll accept them into the record? In the meantime, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Mazur after she's done signing? Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Mazur.
Oh, and I'll leave you a line after.
Right. And that's dated and signed, so, thank you. Is there any else, anyone else from the public wish to be heard on this? Yes, sir. Step up to the microphone, state your name, spell it for the record.
Good evening. My name is Peter Gayer, G-A-Y-E-R, and I reside at 14 Clinton Academy Lane, directly opposite the Sterns' residence. And I'd like to start by reading a letter that I know you don't have, since I only wrote it.
That's fine.
And it's, obviously, it's addressed to the committee. "I am writing to publicly state my objection to the granting of a variance and Natural Resource Special Permit regarding 8 Treasure Island Drive, Amagansett, Sterns' property. As a resident of 14 Clinton Academy Lane for four years, I have witnessed firsthand what only could be described as a destruction of the neighborhood's natural beauty. It is my family's shared feeling that if a special permit and variance are required It is my family's shared feeling that if a special permit and variance are required to enhance Sterns' enjoyment of their property, but to the detriment of their neighbors and environment, then the permit should not be granted. As an example, the neighbor, the location of the pool equipment, although far from the Sterns' residence is possible, puts it uncomfortably close to two other residents' front and side properties. I would expect that a community such as East Hampton, which prides itself on respect for the environment, would understand and appreciate the concerns of the affected neighbors. Signed, myself, Peter Geyer.
Thank you.
Okay. Just a few, just comments.
Sure.
First of all, to Mr. Hammer, a pool is a luxury. I don't know where you live, but it is a luxury. Secondly, I've been there four years, and when I first drove down Dune Road the very first time, I was so impressed with the natural beauty, some might call it weeds, with the natural environment, that it actually is what made me buy the property. Since then, you know, and I know we're not here about what they did, the Sterns', but they've really removed so much of the natural beauty that it's a different location. I mean, it's actually, when I come there now, I feel like I'm somewhere else, not somewhere else that I would really like to have been. And, and my concern is that to do another project, showing continued disregard for not just the environment but for the neighbors, would only further make it someplace that I would really, really, you know, not like to have seen or been if I had known in advance. And, not really, okay, I'm, I'm just hoping the board will review the survey, go over the details that seem to be missing, so that we can have an accurate picture of exactly what's going on, and thank you very much for listening to me.
Mr. Geyer, any, any questions?
I actually have a quick question. You were there for 40 years, you said?
Four, four years.
Four years.
Yeah. I, I believe that almost, I don't want to say today, but within six months of when I had purchased it, construction started.
Was this a vacant lot?
No, no, my, my.
No, this, this.
Oh, no, there, there was a, a residence, a shingled, a white shingled home, very close to the Treasure Island.
Right.
Side, and probably unkept, and probably from the back door of that house all the way to, to where Academy Lane is, was really vegetation, you know, so it was heavily, it was thick.
Okay.
The problem was, you know, I, I understand modest or even aggressive pruning, but what has happened, from, from that, we now have, and I don't mean to, maybe I'm wrong, but at least four gravel parking areas, two on Dune, one on Academy, and one on Treasure Island. You know, it, it appears to have been done uncontrolled. I'm sure there wasn't, I'm sure there was a plan from, from day one, but it, it really, I don't want to say it's ugly. If, if I lived in Queens, it would be gorgeous. But I don't live in Queens, and, and I didn't want to live in Queens. I wanted to live in Amagansett. And I'm, I'm hoping that people here understand that.
Well, the reason why I was asking is, when you talked about the clearing, was the clearing done on the property where the house was originally, the smaller house, and there was vegetation in the backyard, and it's no longer there?
Well, that's true, too.
Or are you talking about vegetation that wasn't on their property?
The, I'll, I'm not.
In other words, to build a bigger house, it would have to take our vegetation, but...
Oh, yeah, no. Excluding the house, there was a lot of vegetation on their property, but it's, as, as people were talking about, this area where, where the roads end and where the property lines begin are vague. So, but there's definitely 10 or 15 feet of Treasure Island Association property, which was heavily vegetated, and then continued on to, now it's the Sterns' property, was heavily vegetated. So you had a very, very large area of heavily vegetated environment.
Uh huh.
They have removed almost all, I'm saying almost, it really is all, but almost all the vegetation on their property, as well as the property, the vegetation on Treasure Island Academy Association. I mean, some, this, we really should show you pictures before and after, because it's significant.
Did, did anybody, do you, do you know, did anybody file a complaint for overclearing a property that wasn't theirs, or?
Well, I, I don't know. I can't answer that. I fought myself for having, this has happened months after I had just for the first time been there, you know, I, I'm not really familiar with, nor did I want to make enemies, you know, you know, you're a new kid on the block, right away I'm going to start trouble by saying, where's your property? Where's the association's property? Why are you taking this down? I didn't do it. There were other people who have done things in the neighborhood, and I've never really came to a meeting, and probably had the main part of their construction been done in what I would have called a responsible manner, I wouldn't be here today. It's because it was done in what I'm calling an irresponsible manner, that when I saw those things, the postings that I got, actually, I'm coming here. This is the first time I've come to something like this ever, or spoke to, you know. So, I'm upset. I'm upset. A lot of what I'm upset about is done and can be undone.
And that's really not why we're here tonight?
Right, and that's not why we're here. But now I just don't want to see a continuation. I'm opposed to a continuation of, of the irresponsible behavior, plus the noise of the pumps, just the whole environment's changed.
Did you want to submit that letter for the record?
Yes, may I?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a clarification. The pool equipment is actually proposed directly adjacent to the Stern house, so you might have been seeing in origin, in an older survey, that the pool equipment has been relocated into a conforming.
We'll go over that when you, when you come back up.
I do. The one I saw was a 10, a 10, 2011, so I may have been over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else from the public wish to be heard on this application? No. Mr. Borsak?
Tyler Borsak from the Planning Department. I'll just skip to the Planning Department's major concerns with the clearing that took place. There was a lot inspection done in 2008, and sometime between then and 2010, the lot was cleared, probably when construction activity was taking place. And the Planning Department would just like to see some sort of, there was a revegetation done through the Natural Resources Department, it was remediated in some way. The Planning Department would just like to see some more beach grass planted, something like that, in the area that was cleared at one point. It's a little thin right now. So that, that's our major concern. I'll move on to trying to answer some of the questions that were brought up. Ms. Mazur mentioned the letter that talked about the beach, the beach veg that was cleared. That was, that was the lot inspection that was done in '08. They were in for some construction on the eastern side of the property, and the, Joe Halsey, the planner who did the lot inspection, said, as long as you don't touch anything on the western side of the property, you won't need to get a natural resource, natural resource special permit. So that's sort of where that, this is a protected area, came from. It's, it was just the beach vegetation from a lot inspection. The total coverage, I thought that it was on, on the survey as well, but apparently it's not, so I can take blame for that. I did, after I read the letter, I did do some very rough measurements. It looks like it's under, but the board may want to, you know, get an addendum from the surveyor or something that'd probably be appropriate, just to answer any concerns on that front. Oh, and the 10 feet on the notice, that was the, the flood zone. The flood zone's an AE-10 flood zone, it's not, that doesn't specify the elevation of the property at all. And the expansion pool on the old survey was, expansion pools are usually labeled on surveys as an area that could one day have an extra pool placed in there, and it probably was never used, they just removed it from the survey. I think that might be all for now. I'll leave the rest up to Mr. Hammer, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Borsak? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else, before I bring Mr. Hammer back up, anyone else have anything that they want to bring before the board at this time?
I have a procedural question.
Step up to the microphone, state your name again.
Joshua Jablons, same spelling. A procedural question, is there, after we learned from Mr. Hammer the updated, or whatever he can figure out about the survey lot coverage and elevation for the pool and other coverages, including the town code for the onsite parking, do, does the public have a chance to ask a further question?
If we keep the, the record open, you'll, you'll be able to look at whatever was put into that record, and also put something in on your own. But once we close the public hearing, I mean, tonight is the public hearing, and then we'll have, once the record is closed, we'll have 62 days to make a decision at that point, and notify the applicant by mail.
Not to belabor things, I'm going to sit down and wait for, to hear what you have.
Thank you. Mr. Hammer?
Hello. Well, we've had a lot of questions here. I think I can answer a lot of them. The expansion pools Tyler touched on, when you're required to submit to the Health Department for a permit, you're required to demonstrate that you can have a 50% expansion area. The reason that was removed from the survey is that's relevant for, only for Health Department application purposes. Once you've installed your sanitary system, that 50% expansion pool, once demonstrated, it's not installed, so that, that's just an area sufficient to accommodate a grading pool, but it's not installed on the property, and likely it wouldn't be in this area, I would suspect, just because most of this is clean percolate sand, so I don't think you're going to have any of the, the, the problems that you have with the perkability or the perk tests that they run here. With respect to the, the coverage, I also agree with Tyler, I kind of eyeballed it myself, my eye isn't that great at this, but it does look like we're under coverage. There are a number of structures shown on that survey that don't require coverage. For instance, I believe the Building Department considers brick and sand to not count towards your total coverage, and I think that's some of the coverage that you're looking at on the survey. I would have no problem if the board wanted to leave the record open, and I can submit a, a survey from the surveyor that shows that we will comply with the coverage. We didn't seek a coverage variance, and, and there'd be no intention to ask for it. With respect to the, the pool and the coping, yes, what you're seeing is a pool that's shown, it has a very small coping, but essentially that is what the applicant wants here. So the pool dimensions shown on the survey are accurate, and sometimes the coping actually overhangs a little bit, you know, you're talking about a very narrow band that goes around it, so that was our intention. With respect to the, the accuracy of test holes, test holes are very accurate. As a matter of fact, you can, you can judge the accuracy of a test hole by looking at the, I think it's the Geodetic Wells Survey that shows groundwater elevations throughout Long Island. We actually do more specific test holes on the property. This one, I guess, dates to 19, or 2008. That's still very more accurate than you would get if you looked at one of the groundwater maps that actually allows you to, to forecast what groundwater is. As a matter of fact, I didn't look at it, but generally, you know, you would say that you'd, you'd expect groundwater to be a plus or minus an elevation of three. I'll bet you that's probably what it says in any event, and in fact, that's what we have here. In terms of this area being composed of small lots, that I would agree with. However, I think this lot is probably the largest of all the adjacent lots that touch it, just eyeballing on the tax map. As a matter of fact, it's twice as large as some of the adjacent lots. 12,000 square feet, or 12,600 square feet, is not what I would term a small lot, and as a matter of fact, we're having a small lot tonight that we'll be talking about a little bit later. You know, 8,000 square feet, those are the more constrained lots, but in this particular instance, 12,000 is in fact a reasonable size. As a matter of fact, this pool would be permissible as of right almost anywhere else in the town other than the fact that we have three front yard setbacks and we need an NRSP. So, you know, a 12,000 square foot or a 12,600 square foot lot would be more than sufficient to accommodate a pool and some other accessory structures without requiring any type of relief from the board. The pool equipment, as I mentioned, was in fact relocated, so that's now shown almost, it's in a conforming location adjacent to the house.
Between the house and the pool.
Yeah, and, and in terms of the clearing issue, I, I don't have personal knowledge of what this house looked like before the, the clearing occurred. However, this, this lot was noted in that original lot inspection to have some beach vegetation. Typically in this area, and maybe Tyler would know better than I would, beach vegetation is usually Amophelia breviciata, that's beach grass, reindeer lichen, they're usually low lying plants. There might have been some beach plums, but a lot of people think all vegetation is good vegetation. A lot of it in this area unfortunately is invasive, so without being able to, to look at it, I can't tell whether or not the, the vegetation you were looking at could have been Russian olive or some of the other invasive plants that we actually try to remove. French broom is another one, I don't know if that's prevalent in this area. Bamboo or arundo, those are types of plants that people enjoy the screen, think of it as a natural environment, but from a habitat value, it really doesn't provide anything. So I do think there is a benefit to some clearing, particularly if you're revegetating with the native Dunland vegetation that will create that habitat value long-term, and that's essentially what we're looking to protect in this area. The property was issued a CO in 2010. I think there was a revegetation that occurred on that property. To my knowledge, there weren't any violations issued, there was revegetation, and it was signed off on in 2010, which is the last time they were in front of the town. And in connection with this application, we'd be willing to do a fairly extensive revegetation of the property, but utilizing native Dunland vegetation that would be approved by the Planning Department, I'm not sure whether that's going to create the kind of vegetated screen that, that the neighbors seem to like in this area, because it may or may not be atypical of what they're trying, you know, of, of what they consider to be the vegetated benefit of the property. And, and without knowing exactly what was there before, I really can't speak to that. However, the, I actually did a number of applications in this area on parcels that were similar, and some of them were smaller. I think the Cleebands up the road had a property that was in front of the zoning board, I want to say 2006. That property did have some secondary Dunland features, which is pretty unique in that area, but I seem to remember that area had very low lying Dunland vegetation and, and reindeer lichen on it, and, and it was kind of a unique feature. We preserved it as part of the, the process, and I thought that was a, an application. There was several other applications I can think of in the neighborhood. I believe the Gellows property, which also, I, I was in front of the board several years ago, is on the other side of Clinton Academy Lane, and there was a more controversial application at the end of the street called the Cooney application. I don't think any of you were on for that, but those, those were much more invasive-type applications, particularly Cooney, there was a lot of outrage because that was essentially a demolition and a reconstruction of the entire house, and my recollection, having visited that site, is after it was demolished, there wasn't anything left. This property, I think, has retained some of its character. With respect to that question about the parking and how the town code requires you to have parking, I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that maybe 30 to 40% of Dune Hampton in general parks on adjacent roadbeds, and I think that's important, because in a lot of these areas, the roads are underutilized, they're not needed for emergency access. People like to not have clearing, you know, the, the parking space, I think he references 360 square feet. If every one of these Dunland parcels had a parking, you know, required parking on it, I think you'd really obliterate the character of the neighborhood. So without addressing whether or not, this does show that there is parking, I think this parking on this site's efficient. Clearly, the building inspector looked at it and signed off on it, but I think requiring everybody to put parking on their own property is probably not a, that's something required by the code for safety concerns, but it also has to be mitigated by a little bit of common sense with respect to, you know, is that really what we want to encourage, is 700 square feet of clearing on every one of these properties in Dune Hampton. Bluff Road, for instance, is 90 to 110 feet wide, if I remember correctly, along most of its path. I'd say 70% of the roads, you know, the properties along Bluff Road actually don't park on their property, they park in the town right away, as I recall, and that's just the way it has always been in this area, so I don't see any reason to change that unless there's a safety concern, which I'm sure the building inspector would be happy to certify, and, and certainly has when he issued the original certificate of occupancy. I'm trying to think if there were any other issues that were addressed.
I have a quick question for you. Am I reading this right? The pool is four feet deep maximum?
I think that's about as deep as you could get it. Essentially, this pool was designed...
Is it entirely, it's always, it's four feet flat?
Yes, and, and this pool was designed for small children, not for an Olympian, you know, so I, I think in, in these low groundwater areas, you have to maintain the two-foot separation. I certainly understand the concern that the pool is going to float away, and that's why building code requires you maintain two-foot separation. There aren't too many pool contractors that would allow you to do anything other than maintain a two-foot separation, because it makes for a better pool, so that's, you know, I think you give up some in terms of the actual depth of the property, but, you know, the pool, its intended use isn't to swim laps, per se, it's to provide a recreational amenity for the family. And I do agree, it is a little bit of a, a luxury, per se, but out here, this, you know, let's face it, we're in a community that is, does have a luxury component, and this is really an alternative that people have come to adore out here, and to really, you know, my friends that have pools, I would never want one, but they love it because their kids can, can play in a supervised area, and they think it's just the cat's meow, whereas myself, I'd rather go to the ocean. That's pretty much all I have to say, unless the board has some questions for me.
Any other questions for Mr. Hammer?
No.
Okay. Uh... Is it Jablons? Okay. I'm going to let you come up one more time, and then we're going to talk about whether we keep this record open.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you one last time. I'm surprised by the contradictions. I do not fully understand what Mr. Hammer is saying. He's saying it's a large lot, but it doesn't have room for parking. My property, Mr. Guyer's property, even Ms. Mazur's property, properties around, we have sacrificed our own property for parking. We are in accordance with the town code. We follow the town code. Our properties follow town code. The property, which I knew before the Stearns moved in, followed the town code. There was parking on the property. The Stearns have chosen, which is very advantageous to them, not to the community, to put the perimeter of their property in such a way that they have no, they do not sacrifice any of their own large lot for their own parking requirements. This self-imposed problem is strange to me, because they are saying they cannot, I think Mr. Hammer is saying that they cannot, it is not appropriate to ask them to follow the code that all of us follow with this large lot, and yet, they are asking to put a luxury on a discretionary item, a pool. So, and a pool so large that they need a variance to do it. They're not asking for a 16 by 22. I know I heard 10-foot pool would be inappropriately small, but let's be clear. A 16 by 22-foot pool would mean that we wouldn't be here talking about this. But they want a 16 by 32-foot pool, 512 square feet. So they obviously have a large lot. They obviously have room for a pool, whether it's conforming or non-conforming, but they certainly have room for parking. And I mentioned it simply to ask the question, is the survey sufficiently accurate to make a decision tonight, which I understand you're dealing with? The issue, I have been there when the beach vegetation was completely destroyed. They took the excavation from their home, their new home, and put it on the area that Mr. Halsey instructed them in that letter that has been submitted to you guys, to the board, sorry. And they put it on it destroying the vegetation. This is a case of, again, a self-imposed problem. We're sitting here saying, we don't know what it looked like. Well, I know what it looked like. I have the same kind of land. Mr. Cleeband knows what it looks like. I appreciate that Mr. Hammer represented Mr. Cleeband. He is, has an identical end cap. He has the exact same circumstances. His property is very attractive and is a role model for many of the properties and is identical. Okay? So whatever issues the Stern have, Mr. Cleeband had the same challenges, and he executed them as he did. I did not hear Mr. Hammer say anything about the elevation either. The elevation is wrong. I understand Ms. Borsak's comment that the, it says elevation 10, and I misunderstood that to mean that the elevation of the pool was to be 10, but the math still does not, then the math does not add up. How can you have a four-foot-deep pool plus two, minus the three, and end up, when your pool goes from seven and a half feet to nine, you know, to nine and a half feet? That doesn't make sense, unless you're planning to bring in fill. Well, if you're planning to bring in fill, why is that not disclosed? Why is this application not complete? Why is this notice, why is this application being noticed? It does not seem there's sufficient information to make a judgment or for the neighbors to really understand what we are going to be living with. This application is the de minimis. It doesn't show us what we are going to be living with. So I do appreciate, one last thing, the idea of an up-to-date 2008 hole. Again, if I wanted a pool, I would want to know what the water table is today, not four years ago, and somebody telling me, oh, don't worry, it didn't change. Because when that pool floats, you've got a real problem. So bottom line is, we have to live with this. We appreciate you considering all the open items here, and there seem to be many, many open items, as well as objectionable items. Thank you.
Thank you. You okay? Okay. Mr. Hammer. I don't like generally to keep records open.
Okay.
The applicants are, do an answer for their applications, but in this case, there are some concerns with the survey and with some of the questions that were brought up and...
I think I can address some of them without requiring the record to be open. A, we didn't request a clearing variance. So, you know, if the board doesn't grant one, and we were to get an approval from this board, we couldn't get a building permit for something that required a clearing variance. So there are other, you know, clearing on a, or coverage is fungible on a property, meaning if 20 square feet needed to be removed on the property or moved around, it certainly can be done in full compliance with the code. So I think the Building Department's very astute about requiring coverage, both building coverage and total coverage variances, you know, calculations before they'll issue a building permit. I did want to address the parking. I never said that my client can't provide parking on this site. In fact, they certainly can. I just questioned whether or not if we started requiring every lot in Dune Hampton to require parking or to provide parking on their property, I think that would be a remarkable change to the character of the community. And as a matter of fact, I haven't been there and actually looked to see, are there parking areas on this property? I'm quite confident telling you that there's plenty of area with or without the pool. Certainly, you wouldn't park in the accessory structure setbacks that we're talking about tonight. So I'm not saying that we don't need to comply with it. I just think that it's a, this is an interesting, unique area that has a different history in terms of parking. Clearwater Beach, where I grew up, everybody parks on their property. That's just sort of the way it is. However, you know, in different areas of the town, there's a different custom or different practice, and I think you have to be, recognize that. Clearly, the Building Department does. So if the board thought it were best for us to provide parking on this property, we certainly could. I just don't know if that would be moving the bar forward or backwards.
Are we sure that the parking that exists now is on Treasure Island Drive and not on the applicant?
There certainly is a parking area that's shown along Treasure Island Drive. I think that's what they referenced, but I at least heard one or two of the people that spoke did say that there is an additional parking area along the rear of the property. So, you know, personally, I was there today and just drove around it, because I always like to have a good idea what's on the ground. But I didn't examine it with respect to where the parking is currently located or where I would have parked had I visited the property.
Yeah. Hold on just a second. I want to deal with the idea of keeping the record open for you to come back with some of the answers that have been asked tonight that maybe at least the neighbors aren't sure of what those answers are. How does the board feel about keeping this record open for a week to have Mr. Hammer clarify some of the issues that have been brought up tonight?
Well, are we going to require a new test hole, seeing that seems to be one of the issues that was raised by the neighbor, that the test holes dates from '08?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. I think Mr. Jablons, am I saying that right, suggested that if it were he and it was his property, he would, he would want to know.
Right.
And would do that on his own.
The only thing it seems that Mr. Hammer has to give us is the calculation of coverage.
And I'd like to know, you know, exactly as far as those park, that parking area, how much of that is on Treasure Island Drive and how much of that is on the property of the Stearns?
Should we include our clearing calculations too, while he's at it?
Well, if he's going to provide the coverage, yeah. I mean, usually, usually the surveys provide that.
Does that include it?
The survey would normally give us both, and the survey doesn't in this case. So, and as I said in the beginning, it's a pretty busy survey, so I think the board would like that information. I think, at least, I don't want to speak for the board, but I certainly would, and there's been enough questions from the neighbors, so that if you're willing to...
And I think that's a reasonable request with respect to the clearing and coverage calculations. Truthfully, both Tyler and I, normally, that's protocol. I'm not sure exactly how either of us missed it.
Both you guys missed it.
I'd have no problem providing that to you. However, with respect to the test hole, you know, sea level is zero. So, you know, is the test hole going to be moving, you know, I guess the question is, has it raised high or not? There are seasonal fluctuations in water, particularly in this area where, is this area on public water?
Yes.
Okay. Well, public water is an introduction of water into an aquifer that's not locally sourced. So there's a positive water budget in a lot of this area. So if you went August 1st, you're going to find that groundwater does rise a little bit, and it's because people are running their faucets and taking showers and flushing the toilets. So, I mean, groundwater is a science, and I think the science supports that, you know, groundwater elevation about three is about right in this area. I'd certainly defer to the town planners, but that's been my experience. Is test holes are great when you do them on the property because they're accurate, but there's a degree of inaccuracy built into any test hole. I'll bet you, if you took a test hole every month for the next two years, you know, there'd be slight variations in it, but you plan for, you know, what you expect, and they're always field verified. As I said, when they excavate to do something, they can tell when groundwater is here. This isn't, you're digging a 30-foot hole, you know, you're going to know exactly where groundwater interface is, and they set the, all their structures accordingly, because they know it's not a good idea to be below that.
Okay. All right. I think at this point, Ms. Mazur, you want to, you'd have to come up to the microphone. This will be the last speaker, so we can move on. We've got a couple other hearings tonight.
Yeah, I'm sorry to prolong this, but there are, let me just tick off one or two things. The parking right now, there is a gravel parking lot on Treasure Island Drive. However, much of the, much of the size of the, of the area of that parking is on property that belongs to the Treasure Island Drive Association. And some of the foliage that was maintained by the association, it's some of the foliage that has been removed. Moving west on Dune Hill Road, there are two separate parking areas that have been gravelled. Gravelled? Yeah, gravelled. And those are also on Treasure Island Drive property, belongs to the association, the road association. And then on the Clinton Academy Lane side, there's a, one of the photographs shows a very large wooden gate. And in front of that gate, it looks as though that is a potential parking area, which is also Treasure Island Road, Treasure Island Drive Association property that has been defoliated. Okay? So there is parking, but none of, it is all on the road association property. And part of the problem that we neighbors have had with it is that that was some of the area that gave us foliage covering and buffer. The other quick comment about the water table. We, in that area on Clinton Academy Lane, on the, on the west and on the east side, we have experienced a steadily increasing, rising water table since I built my house in 1964. After rain, since in the last 10 years, we have flooding after the simplest rainfall. Now, we've had, we have many more homes that are on that line that runs east along the, that's north of Marine Boulevard. And during that huge spring flood a year ago, when we were coming to the town for, for help, for flood help, when Congressman Bishop was trying to help the town get some flood help for some of the residents, we were flooded. I mean, my house was an island. It was literally an island. I was surrounded on three sides by water. The Netra property, which is south, due south of the Stern property, had his entire western section of his property was underwater. So it's a very volatile area in terms of the water table, and it is rising. I mean, I have seen it personally. I have experienced it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hammer, do you, you don't need any more than...
A day.
A couple of days for this? How quickly could you get something to the board?
I would think in a couple of days. You know, it comes down to the surveyors. I don't know. Sometimes they don't answer the phone, but I certainly would get it as quick as I can.
Tell me what you need.
How about a week?
A week? Okay. I'm going to ask the board what their desire is here, and I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing, but keep the record open for a time...
Mr. Chairman, I did just want to clarify a couple of things. One is the road of the Treasure Island, it's a road. It's not a nature preserve. It's a road, and essentially, it could be improved and paved right up Stem to Stern. It just isn't. And in terms of that, I remember that awful flood event of, I think that was two years ago. That was historically unbelievable flooding, Maori and Springs. People were pumping their basements for weeks after that. I think groundwater came up about four to seven feet, depending on where you were. That certainly, we considered that a 100-year condition at the time, but it certainly was an unusual condition. And I think this area and all of Napique suffered similarly. It was a terrible situation, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, it's in Amagansett, so I'm happy to make a motion to keep the record open for a week from the council to provide an updated survey, but that would be not open to additional public comment? I mean, I think all we need is just an updated survey.
We could, but I don't think there's any problem with letting somebody put it, as long as the record's open for the applicant, somebody could put a letter in if they wanted to, after they looked at...
A letter.
After they looked at...
So we wouldn't do another public hearing?
Oh, no, 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 no. We're going to, we're going to close the, at least, I'm hoping somebody's going to make a motion to close the public hearing, but keep the public record open for a week.
That would be exactly what I was intending to do.
Okay. Can I have a second on that?
A second, then.
Brian?
Concur.
And I also concur, so that's, the public hearing is closed. The public record is open until 4 o'clock next Tuesday?
Yes. Close of business on Tuesday, next week, councillor.
Okay. Thank you all for coming.
So it closes next week, then we can make a decision?
Could make a decision.
It closes, it closes business on Tuesday.
We could.
Good.
Good. Thank you.
I stole your pen.
Oh, you did?
Temporary.
Thank you very much. Bringing that back, the only one I had. Thank you. Mr. Hammer, I see you have a busy night tonight.
It's the Andy Hammer Show, and trust me, I'd rather be watching Deadliest Catch or something.
Okay. All right. The second public hearing of the evening is that of Bethany Meyer, 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 not sure which. This is a 4,000-square-foot parcel at 25 Wyndance Lane, Beach Hampton, Section 1, map number 1203, block 14, lots 45 and 46 in Amagansett, tax map number 30174 03-19.1. The description of the project is to construct a 51-square-foot first-story and 533-square-foot second-story addition outside of the town's pyramid regulations and exceeding the allowable lot coverage. The relief sought are three variances required. Two variances from 255-11-72 of the town code are required to construct the additions four feet and seven feet outside the town's pyramid regulations, and one variance of 21 square feet or 0.5% from 255-11-10 of the town code is required to exceed lot coverage where 800 square feet or 20% is required, and any other relief necessary. This is a B resident zone, Zone X flood zone, and the secret class is a Type 2. And councillor, do we have affidavit service posting?
Yes, I've reviewed the affidavit service and posting. All appears to be in order.
Okay. Not only is it the Andy Hammer Show, it's the Don Cerrillo Show tonight.
Yes, it is.
Ms. Cerrillo, do you have a field report?
I do. I do. I went the same day. As it turns out, this is Beach Hampton also. Although it's part of Beach Hampton, it's a long walk, so I drove from Treasure Island Drive to Wyndance. This is a duly posted photograph. It is a, as you can tell from the written record, it is a confined space, and I think these pictures will highlight that. There is a small parking area in the front where my... that. There is a small parking area in the front where my, where my Ford is. I'm giving you a northern exposure. I'm giving you looking east, and then I have over here, the north side, it is almost entirely surrounded by decking, which goes practically up to the property line on both sides. There is room in the back, which you'll see from these photos. This is the north side looking east. This is the looking south from the north side. I actually had to trespass a little bit, stand on the neighbor's property. That's how, that's how confined this was in order to get that, that shot. In the back porch, I did this so you could see who the southern neighbor was and how close they are. And then, of course, looking forward where the bump out would probably be. And on this particular picture in the back, on the, this is south side looking east, towards Montauk, you can see the property marker is just not too far off of the back porch. And these other pictures are just for your amusement, I guess. This is the south side looking north, so I gave you all four exposures and a, and a more clear front picture to show you just how much it pretty much goes from one end of property line to the other end of the property line. Neighbor to the south is, is taller than that. You can see that on the photographs. Because it is such a small confined house, you can understand why the only place to go was up. It doesn't really have a lot of other room. There's nothing else to report. I drove around the neighborhood. It is probably the smallest house in the neighborhood, one of the smallest plots I've, I've seen myself. But that being said, you can understand what the request is for, I think, from those photos. I have nothing else to, to say. There was nothing else.
Any questions for Ms. Cirillo about the field report? Okay. Mr. Hammer, round two.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Andy Hammer. I'm here tonight representing Bethany Mayer, who is actually here as well with her daughter. I think it's a three-year-old daughter. And I'm here to, to, to tell a little bit of a story for the board to hear. And I think it's important you hear the story. Essentially, Bethany's a friend of a friend of mine. She purchased a property in Amagansett, I believe it was last year, in August of last year. It's a very small property, a very small cottage on the property. Bethany's a single mother. She's living full-time in Amagansett, and she wants her daughter to attend Amagansett school. I don't think they attend school at three, do they?
No.
Next year, she'll be enrolled in Amagansett School District. When she first approached me about the property, you know, the first thing that struck me about this lot, it's a pre-existing lot. It's very small. It's 4,000 square feet. One of the smaller lots in the town of East Hampton. Certain, you know, I think there might be, as a matter of fact, I think there is at least a couple that I'm aware of in Springs that are smaller than this. I think there's one across from the, the Barnes Country Store, as I recall, from the, from my past. In any event, she wanted to try to expand this house to accommodate her and her daughter. Right now, the, the existing house is just a little bit larger than the minimum-size house required in the town of East Hampton, which is 600 square feet, which actually dates to the subdivision code that says you can have a 600-square-foot building envelope, and that's sufficient for a single-family residence. It is a very small house. It's essentially a cottage on the property. When we, when we sat down and tried to design something to fit this lot, it was darn near impossible. I think if you look at the coverage calculations, you'll see that a one-story house on this property more or less maxes out your building coverage limitations. The other thing that is readily apparent, that with the side yard setbacks on the structure, more or less set equally between 10 and 11 feet, there's no way to accommodate a second story without requiring a pyramid variance, because New York State Building Code would require for a story to be essentially a little bit higher than, you know, eight feet, I think seven foot's the minimum head height. So it's just impossible to build any kind of second story on this property without requiring a pyramid variance. When I sat down with the, the draftsman on this and talked about what we thought we could do, the thing we suggested was to really try to minimize the size of the addition as well as the pyramid encroachment. So if you look at the survey, you'll see the addition's not a full addition across the entire property. It's only about, eh, 2/3 of the property that's proposed to be improved with an addition. The reason it's 2/3 is that was designed to fit a reasonable-sized bedroom, which is what Bethany told me her desire was, was to have a separate bedroom for her daughter. Right now, I believe it's a one-bedroom cottage. If you look at the actual plans that we submitted, I have kind of a blow-up of them right here. That just shows the pyramid variance. Those are in your file as well. And these are the two adjacent property owners that are about 10-foot from the property line on each side. So the pyramid variance varies a little bit, but essentially, this is designed to provide sufficient head height. There is a way you could design a roof line that would comply with the, the pyramid line here, but it wouldn't in fact provide any habitable floor area. Essentially, it would be a vaulted ceiling at the best, maybe a storage loft. It would be something that would be considered, you know, in addition to this, but it certainly wouldn't comply with New York State Building Code and wouldn't provide any type of benefit to Bethany. You know, I think part of the, you know, I understand there are members of the public here as well, but I think the reason we have zoning boards is strict applications of zoning codes by themselves create situations that, that call for some kind of relief. That's the purpose of the zoning board. You're a community-minded board. I'm here tonight to ask for you to consider and look favorably upon the relief or requesting. It's a very, even after this addition is constructed, it's still going to be a very minor, a very modest residence. I think the total square footage is 1,100 square feet. And the other thing I'd point out is the gross floor area limitations of the town code are almost meaningless with respect to this lot. If you think the 12 percent a lot area plus 1,600 square feet, we're not even approaching any of that, and it's not even feasible to try to approach on this. So, you know, I think we tried as best we could to accommodate the, the concerns that, that are going to be raised tonight about, geez, how much of, of the area is actually going to be impacted by the, the construction of this addition. I will say, having visited the site myself, it's very, very well screened on the south side of the property by a tall stand of, of trees. I'm not even sure, looking at it, which, which property they're on. If they're on this property, it looked like they were more or less right on the border. And there are some fairly significant screening trees on the north side of the property as well. And that would certainly be something we'd be willing to consider bolstering as the screening to try and shield this addition, or proposed addition from the adjacent property owners. But in terms of complying with the town code, there's just no way we can because of the practical difficulties associated with the property. I think any type of variance application at its very heart is a balancing of the, the equities here. The benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to the, the community, or the detriment to the general health, welfare, safety of the community. Obviously, we have an applicant here who has a need for a benefit. The question is, is there an appreciable detriment? You know, this area is sort of an unusual area in some respects because there's a very large eclectic group of houses in the immediate neighborhood that range from cottages to very large-scale developments. The existing house on this property is, for all intents and purposes, the same size as a detached accessory garage on, on some of the adjacent properties. And, and it's kind of refreshing to see someone have that as what they're starting out with and really wanting to do something a little bit better for their family and running up against the zoning code. So, you know, I think that's, that's the central basis of our argument tonight, is that, you know, as, as the balancing agent, I'd like you to be able to hear all sides of the arguments and be able to assess whether or not this is something that would meet the variance standards for the requested relief. As you can see, the, we did kind of cock-eye the roof addition. That was done to try and provide the, the most beneficial pyramid side on, on the closest neighbor, essentially, and to really minimize the impact that we were having. That's also why it's not a full second story. It's just a, a portion of the existing structure on the property. Other than that, I'd be available to answer questions. I know the applicant would also like to address the board, so whenever the chairman thinks that's appropriate, you know, certainly that would be fine with me.
Any questions for Mr. Hammer from this board?
Is this a main residence?
Yes, this is a primary residence.
Any others?
I, I did, would like to say that when, when she purchased this lot, I thought, geez, that's the only affordable lot in Amagansett at the time, or the affordable house. Part of the reason was because it was such a de minimis structure. And, and I don't think her effort here tonight is, is to gain some kind of financial benefit. It's essentially to provide a home that she can, you know, feel proud of, of raising her family in.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak on this application? Denise? Just state your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, council, and Denise. My name is Denise Shern. I'm an attorney at Tarbit, Lester, and Shern. Our offices are at 524 Montauk Highway in Amagansett, New York. Here tonight on behalf of the two immediate neighbors to the Mayer property, I would just first like to hand out my memorandum of law. I apologize for submitting it at this point, but I was just retained on Friday. So as I stood before you last week, I stand before you now with only a couple of days' worth of preparation, but I did the best I could.
Your weekends have been busy.
Yes, they have. There's an original on the top, and there should be enough copies for everybody. I'm not exactly sure what to do about the view of the board. I, I think I'll just pick it up and move it when I, when I want to show you something. As I stated in my introduction, we represent the two immediate neighbors, one to the north, one to the south. Mr. and Mrs. Poole, who reside to the south, and Mr. and Mrs. Herrenden, or Herrendine, who reside immediately to the north. Just going to show you on the tax map where the properties are located. I know this is going to make the TV people mad, but on the tax map, this is the Herrendines'. This is the Poole property, and this is the Mayer property. You can see that the Mayer property is very undersized for the neighborhood. It's 4,000 square feet. Minimum lot area in the area, in the B Residence Zone District is 20,000 square feet. Herrendine's property is 10,000 square feet, and the Poole's property is 6,000 square feet. What you're looking at immediately to my left is a proposal that was before you in 1982. This was for a smaller pyramid variance and actually a smaller residence. The proposed residence at the time was 900 square feet. The board came back and vehemently said no to that proposal. The applicant came back with a slightly smaller proposal of 800 square feet, and the board said no again. Immediately to the left of that is the proposal that you have before you tonight, which, as you can see in the diagram, is obviously substantially larger than what was proposed in 1982.
Those lines in the proposed project, the same lines as were in the 1982?
That's correct. Those are the pyramid lines.
Okay.
So you can see how they cut the second story more intensely in the new proposal than they did in the old proposal. And just a little history on the property itself, or these three parcels. The three parcels were owned back in 1982 by Paul Arbia, who was the original applicant on this property. He owns New Sunshine, which is a, a local builder. And these parcels were created pursuant to a map that was filed in 1936 in Suffolk County. What happened back then, before we had zoning, was that developers would slice up properties into 20-by-100-foot strips. And they would file maps with the county, and then they would decide which parcels they were going to merge together to create building lots and which parcels they weren't going to merge. And when the town zoning code came into existence, and later on, when the town board started to look at some of these areas, they decided that 20-by-100-foot strips weren't really appropriate for development. So what the town did was they adopted an urban renewal plan, and they overlaid onto these old maps a map of their own. And they said, you, Mr. Jones, have to join with Mr. Smith and, you know, Mrs. Shern. All three of you need to get together. Someone has to buy those three strips and create one building lot, which hopefully would meet the 20,000-square-foot minimum, which was what it was back then and what it is today. This area didn't have an urban renewal overlay on it. And what happened was, in essence, Mr. Arby had decided which ones he was going to keep separate. So he kept a 6,000-square-foot lot, the 4,000-square-foot lot, and the 10,000-square-foot lot. Now, at that time, he could have chosen to make two lots, or he could have chosen to have the three lots. And obviously, we know which one he chose, and, and that was his prerogative. However, along with having a small lot comes zoning restrictions. It's inevitable. I think your former chairman was pretty renowned for saying that small lots mean small houses. You know, a 4,000-square-foot lot is definitely the smallest lot I've seen in the town. I understand where the applicant is coming from, and I totally understand her desire to want to be in the Amagansett School District. So, you know, my, my family comes from Amagansett. I love Amagansett. My office is in Amagansett. I completely understand that desire. However, what I would say is she purchased the lot in August of 2011. You know, having done her own due diligence, including reviewing the zoning code and reviewing the prior 1982 denial, she would have seen that the zoning board 30 years ago said, you're not going to have a 900-square-foot house on this lot. You're not even going to have an 800-square-foot house on the lot. That's how we ended up with a 766-square-foot house on the lot. So coming into the purchase with that knowledge, she had to have recognized that coming to the board and asking for a 1,260-square-foot residence was going to be a challenge, and that possibly adding on to the house at all was going to be challenging from a zoning perspective. And the reason is that the pyramid law is designed to protect your neighbors. It's designed to allow light and air and space in between houses, especially second stories of houses. On this lot, because it's so narrow, the zoning code says you can have reduced side yards on the property. It's called the four-tenths rule. When the town adopted the four-tenths rule, they specifically said in the zoning code, we're adopting the four-tenths rule. We're going to give you a break on your side yards, which means your first story and a second story, if you can fit it, can be at that reduced setback. But they specifically said that the pyramid law still applies. The reason being, they still wanted that relative height restriction in place for the purpose of maintaining that low-scale visual image and allowing the neighbors to have a bit of free and open air above the existing residence. When you look at this property from the street, and I took a picture of it this morning, you can see that it looks like the side yards are actually larger than they are. And that's because the neighbors, at least the neighbors to the south, have maintained, I'm sorry, to the north, have maintained larger side yards. So it has the visual appearance of having larger side yards than actually exist. The property is, is not only covered with the 766-square-foot house, it also has 708 square feet of decking and 842 square feet of other improvements. So it's actually in excess of what's allowed right now for total coverage. We allow 50 percent. It's at 57 percent. So as Members Cirillo pointed out, the property is already covered sort of corner to corner. So now we're just sort of asking to add insult to injury. When the board heard this variance application in 1982, there were at least five neighbors that came to the hearing and objected to what Mr. Arbia proposed, which, as you can see, is smaller than what the current applicant is proposing tonight. What you have tonight, again, is another five neighbors, maybe four, I'm not sure. Two, two of them are out of the country, Mr. and Mrs. Herrendine, who are coming with the same objections and the same question to the board, which is, you know, this lot is small. We've all tried to the best of our ability to fit our houses within a conforming building envelope, realizing that many of the lots down in this area are substandard. You know, we've done the best that we can, and we're asking Ms. Mayer to do the same thing. I think that, and I'm not an architect, so I just looked at it from a layman's perspective. I think that the variance request could be minimized more than it, than it is tonight. You have to keep a height of seven feet for 50 percent of the floor area of each room. So I think the pitch of that roof could come down a little bit. I think that, as I'm reading the plans anyway, it's seven feet all the way out to the outer edges of the outside walls of that residence. So I think the application is aggressive in terms of height, especially given the size of the lot. But I think, in general, both of my clients' positions, and I know Mr. and Mrs. Poole are probably going to want to come up here and address you personally, that we're actually just asking, God bless you, for the application to be denied outright at this point. I've submitted a pretty comprehensive memorandum, so I don't really want to take any more of the board's time up at the podium, but I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Can you tell me when those other two houses were built, north and south?
Same time period.
Same time as...
Yeah, all by the same person or the same entity.
Sunshine?
That's right.
All at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had a similar question. Do you know whether or not the southern neighbor had a pyramid variance?
The southern neighbor had a pyramid variance on the southerly side of the parcel, so not on Ms. Mayor's side of the parcel, two to three feet in height. I tried to get a copy of it. I just ran out of time because it's in the basement.
Right.
And you have to sign up for those files. I asked Mr. and Mrs. Poole to bring a copy of it, but they had, they packed up all their stuff. So they have probably a better recollection than I'm actually conveying to you.
Well, we could ask them.
But you can ask them directly.
And the northern neighbor did not get a variance?
Did not need a variance.
Didn't look like it.
Yeah, they have a lot, they have the 10,000-square-foot lot. So they just actually did a renovation of that house two years ago or a year and a half ago and maintain, you know, stayed within the building envelope.
So the Poole's variance didn't affect the lot in question?
That's correct.
It affected the southern side?
Exactly.
Other questions for Ms. Shern? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard on this application? Yes, sir. Step to the mic, state your name and spell it for the record. I guess you're Mr. Poole.
Yes. Jonathan Poole, P-O-O-L-E. I own 29 Wyandance Lane, which is the southern property. Number one, I want to respond to some of the things that Mr. Hammer said. He claimed that the existing house is one-bedroom. It's actually two bedrooms. And I actually had printed out a listing, which I'll be glad to give you, when this house was up for sale, that lists as two bedrooms, two baths. So that's the first thing. His second comment was that the 500-plus square feet was relatively minimal. It's not minimal, particularly when you're talking about building something over 700-something square foot existing first floor. Basically, what's happened here is his client bought this property, knowing full well what the situation was. This is really a self-created hardship. She's here before the board to tell you she wants her daughter to be able to attend Amagansett schools. She took a chance. She took a gamble. There's a record here. As was indicated previously, a less aggressive variance application was denied by this board in 1982. And now she's before the board with something much more aggressive. She's talking about 500 square feet for a master bathroom, bedroom and bathroom. My second story is 600 square feet, in which we have three bedrooms and a bathroom. In terms of my variance, my variance was done so that there was enough height in the bathroom to be able to stand in the shower. If I didn't get that variance, you wouldn't have been able to stand. You would have had to do this in the shower. So that's the nature of that. And I don't know if you have any questions or...
And it was for two, two to three feet, the variance, you said?
Yes.
Two to three feet?
Your variance?
Yes.
So you've applied for a pyramid variance. So you knew, you know, you know what it's, what it's like to go ahead and apply.
Well, but I'm going to...
For a variance. And I know it's because you wanted to stand up in the shower.
Well, but...
But there was, there was a reason why you wanted a pyramid variance.
But let me, but let me respond to that.
Sure.
On the north side of my house, where there is no variance, what we did to avoid needing a variance is to cut the roof line down so that at the edge of the bed, of my son's bedrooms, it's only six feet high. The bedrooms themselves are 10 by 10. So we, we did what we could to stay within the code. And there are ways to do it to minimize what you need to do. This application you have before you is kind of different. It's a much smaller property. It was a property that, when the original variance application was before this board, was vehemently opposed by the neighbors, and some of the neighbors are here tonight.
We understand.
Some of the same neighbors.
We understand that. Any other questions for Mr. Poole?
No, I don't have them.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard on this? Yes, sir. Just state your name for the record and spell it, please.
Yeah. Thank you. My name is Donald Dennis, D-E-N-I-S. I have the house with my wife on 18 Wyandance Lane.
And where is that in proximity to the...
That's, would be northwest of this property.
Okay.
Probably within 120 feet, maybe. I'm a registered architect. I've been practicing out in eastern Long Island when I opened my office in Aquabogue in 1966. I've worked in five towns, primarily in eastern Long Island, but I've also worked in Connecticut, New Jersey, Nassau County. And I want to say something about your pyramid law. You probably are familiar with this, but I'll repeat it for the audience. East Hampton, I think, was the first town I came across that had a pyramid law. Prior to that, the New York State Code dictated the house height. I think it used to be 32 feet, maybe 30 feet. I know it's 30 feet in Southampton. They reduced it to 2 feet. But that meant you could have a sideyard possibly in a house that was maybe 20 feet and build a house that was 30 feet high. East Hampton set a pattern for other towns to follow with this pyramid law because they realized that there was inequities with someone building a two-story house compared to a one-story house with maybe a setback which was conforming. So they were concerned about the bulk of the house. So what you have here is a situation, I came to the original hearing for this house when it was built in 1982. I opposed it on the basis that it didn't conform to the pyramid law, which I think is an excellent law, because it does take into account the bulk of the house and its relationship to its neighbor. You have to realize, too, that the attorney talked about vegetation. Vegetation is not a lifetime thing. Plants live lifespan like we do, maybe a little bit longer, a little bit shorter, but they live and die. They die of natural diseases. So that's a situation, it is pretty well vegetated, north and south, but I don't think that's a consideration. I, I think that it's important that you consider the fact that the, that the original board did not give the variance. And in reality, it was much more minor than what we're asking for right now, your hearing before you. This is a tremendous increase in the bulk of the house. The square footage is not a big increase. It's a big increase, maybe as a percentage of the total house, but it's a smaller area than the bottom floor. But it's a big increase on the bulk of the house, and I think it sets a very bad precedent. If you have the foresight to enact a law that has the pyramid law in effect to protect the neighbors and provide light and air to the residents of this community, and you let something like this go through, I don't think you should probably get rid of the pyramid law. What's the sense of having it? And I, and I do think this, this is really not a hardship case. I mean, this is something, I'm just treating it as an architect. You can deal with that as a separate item, but I, I think it's wrong to grant this variance, and I so state. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dennis?
Uh-uh.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard on this?
Yeah.
Stay your name for the record and spell it.
My name is Lou Arceri. I live at 30 Wyandance, across the street from the current question.
Is it A-C-E-R-I?
A-R-C-E-R-I. Okay. I built in '62. The town was usually with their code, but I managed to survive and build. In the early '80s, the builder did a very good job. He bought all the adjacent properties that we're discussing tonight and re-divided it. So he had two standard lots on the outside and a sub-size lot in the middle. And he built the two north and south homes. And then, being his own neighbor, there was no opposition to him getting the variances he needed to build the cottage. And it was always considered a cottage. Since then, he sold out, took his money, and he's on his merry way somewhere. But we are now living there. At one time, I was the highest lot on that part of Wyandance Lane. With all the variances and changes in codes, I'm now one of the lowest. I won't even go into groundwater, as Mr. Hammer has. I see it all the time. But you've got to hold the line. It is unfortunate, in this case, the young lady would like to build a home. I know what she feels like because I loved it when I built mine. But there are some rules you have to follow. And all I can say is, if you are buying, you should know what you're buying before you buy it. This is a problem, and if the board decides to be kind and generous again and give another variance, my wife will be on me tomorrow if she wants a garage. That's all.
Any questions for Mr. Arceri?
Any.
Anyone else that hasn't been heard yet wish to be heard for this board? Ms. Shern?
I apologize. I just wanted to mention, and it is in the memo of law, that a few weeks ago, or a couple of months ago, actually, I was here for a couple of variances on 57 Waters Edge. And one of the variances was a pyramid variance. And my neighbor was a 100-foot-wide, unimproved area that was owned by Barnes Landing Association. They had a walkway that was located 68 feet from my proposed garage, or our, my client's proposed garage. I asked for a seven-foot pyramid variance. The cubic area, by my eye, is a lot smaller than what's proposed here because it just cut the corner of the building, and my variance was denied. So I'm just bringing that to the board's attention as far as precedent is concerned. I mean, obviously, you have more on-point precedent from 30 years ago, but just wanted to have the board keep that in, in your minds in rendering a determination.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyler Borzak from the Planning Department. I just wanted to touch upon the 1982 determination, just to give some history as to what exactly happened in that application. At that time, it was a 2.5% coverage variance that was proposed. It was a 900-square-foot residence. At that time, the board said that, in their determination, the board said, quote, "The applicant indicated that they would be willing to accept a house of only 800-square-feet in size. In view of the extreme smallness of the parcel of land, such a residence would still be, in the board's opinion, too large for the lot, particularly since any house would violate the pyramid law, as the property is only 40 feet in width." I do have a copy of that determination. There should be a copy in the board's file, but I have one in case there isn't. The only other thing to mention is the total coverage is not proposed to change. However, it already exceeds the town regulations for total coverage at 2,316 square feet, where 2,000 square feet is what is allowed by town code. Other than that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Borzak?
No.
No.
Thank you, Tyler. Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Poole?
In reference to the listing, if the house is a two-bedroom, I'd like that...
Did you want to submit that?
Did you sign it on the back?
Here, just sign it on the back, date it. Just sign it for me. Oh, you did? Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks. Okay. Mr. Hammer?
Yes.
Okay, I asked before, and I didn't, I didn't see your hand go up.
I haven't done this before, so I'm not sure.
Okay. State your name and spell it for the record.
It's Bethany Mayer, B-E-T-H-A-N-Y-M-A-Y-E-R. So I, thank you, sorry, I'm nervous.
Don't worry.
Thank you for coming tonight, and I guess I just want to give you, sorry, it's embarrassing. I just want to give you an idea...
Take your time, you're fine.
...what we're trying to do. I guess I'm just a little surprised by the people coming out tonight being upset. That's the last thing I wanted to do. I just wanted to give you a background of what I was looking to do with the house. So yes, it is a two-bedroom. I'm not, that's not a denial, and I think that was just misspoken in the paperwork, which I just read. What, and when I, I guess I'm surprised, too, because I'm just looking to enhance the neighborhood. This house, when I bought it, it's what I could afford. I wish I could afford a bigger parcel. It's very small, but also being just my daughter and I, it's what I can maintain. I don't want to get in over my head with the property as well. When I did buy it, it's very, the previous owner, Mr. Brown, he was a very nice man, was very open about different repairs I had to do. So my intent is to live there full-time. I didn't know the repairs at this point. There's some plumbing and heating and some roofing repairs. So I would have liked to have moved in when my lease was up at my other place when I bought it in August, but it's been sitting there for a while because when I checked with my builders, it's probably more affordable to do everything at once. And what I'm looking to do is have just a decent-sized enough place for my daughter and I. When I bought it, it was a rental, so a weekly rental most of the time, sometimes monthly. So I thought, I didn't, I guess my ignorance is I thought this would be enhancing the neighborhood as having a full-time resident. There won't be a lot of people there either. The reason why I'm seeking another bedroom is I am able to work from home during the winter, and then I do retail during the summer. So my mother will come up and, sorry, live with us during that time, so I was hoping to have more space. But I understand, I respect the laws that you have, and I don't want to, I worked with the builder and the architect to try to make it so I wouldn't be impeding on to the neighbors. One of the things that we discussed is to take out, it does have a huge, how they built is they built a huge deck around it and just let it grow wild. So there are a lot of vines and things choking out the trees. We cleared that out, and we want to take off that big deck and start replanting some more trees and coverage around the property. So right now, it's just this big deck that covers a lot of the property, so I don't even need space. So we're not looking to increase that footprint, but there is, I'm looking for some space to add this extra bedroom. I took pictures, but clearly you do all that, so you don't need my pictures, but I do have those. And I guess that's all I have to say.
Any questions for Ms. Mayer?
No.
Your daughter's very cute. See her right there.
She's very good. Nice.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
You say it was a rental when you purchased it, but you were intending to move in as it was? Or did you buy it with the expectation that you would be able to...
I thought I could just do a few quick repairs and move in, but it became something bigger as more, as far as there was some, because of all the trees, the roof needs some repair.
Right.
So yeah, I had a rental, so already I was renting something, so my intent was to move right in.
Okay.
But this has been delayed because we had to apply for the, you know, I wanted to try to apply for this, to build this other room. When I talked to my builder, if I said, "Can I just fix the plumbing, do some of these things, do a new roof, and move in?" You know, it was, he told me it would be really cost prohibitive to try to do two separate renovations. I need to be in there by June, you know, before the summer, so this will be very quick. I don't want to ruin everyone's summer. It's not a, you know, I want to make it look nice and kind of match the other beautiful houses on the street. It's, and...
You're going to leave the bulk of the facade the same in the front, and you're going to try to add a second story? Is that what you...
Yes, yes. We're trying to, I'll...
And at the time that you purchased it, that's what you expected to do, or...
I don't think it was expecting, but I didn't, we, when I purchased it and when I spoke with Mr. Hammer and with the buyer, it was thought that we could get enough space to walk in a room to put, that there was enough space in the building code, until, I had to get several surveys done. So I'm not saying that I'm not ignorant to the process and that, you know, I should be, now I know, but I didn't know how much, you know, that I wouldn't be able to walk in the room. So it's kind of like my neighbor's issue. I couldn't stand up in the room if I did it, you know? And I just, it would look unusual, or it's not even worth it, I guess, to have a room you can't stand up in. But, so yeah, I'm not sure if I answered your question. Did I expect it just... Did I expect it just to magically be all okay? No, I didn't think so, and I didn't expect it to be easy to do.
But you purchased it with, in the back of your mind, with the expectation of being able to hopefully expand it?
Someday or eventually. And when I found out I had to redo the roof and everything, it, the day is now. It would cost a lot to redo the roof and then later to have to, you know, then be able to expand it now. So, when I kind of went through the plans with the builder and made it as small and feasible as possible, it was something I can afford to do that now.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Mayer? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about the question.
No, you're fine. Mr. Hammer?
I've certainly, you know, appreciated all the comments from the neighbors. You know, there's two sides to a story, and I think that's what this board is here for. One thing that did happen is when Bethany first went to purchase this property, she went and saw the draftsman, and we tried as best we could and designed something that fit within the code. What we got at the end of the day was not something that really provided her with any benefit. I think if you look at the planes a little closer, and these are on file with the board, this is a, I'm not sure who that person is, but it's this representative person. I see him in all my planes. But you see him standing up at the top right here. That's the pyramid line as it affects the property. So, it's, there's not a very large area of the property. If you, I don't even think you could design a code compliant that would meet 50 percent of the head height requirement here because of the slopes. I would think you would probably plunge out right about there. Essentially, you would get a, maybe a four to five foot. I don't have a scale on me right now, but it would be a very, very narrow code compliance. So, it was pretty clear when we, when we did the plans originally to try to comply entirely with the code, that it wa, it just wasn't a practical alternative, and it probably wouldn't have met building code. So, it became readily apparent to us that, you know, we were going to have to request some kind of relief to have a meaningful story. That's why they did try to minimize the length of the variance. I understand Paul Arbiat was in here in 1982 and asked the board for relief. Paul Arbiat has a very different story and a very different benefit that he was seeking to get from that property than Bethany is right now. And I do think that's relevant for the board's consideration. In terms of the pyramid law, I'm not here saying that I think the pyramid law should be ignored. What I'm saying is that this board grants variances to people that can demonstrate they have a benefit that outweighs the detriment to the general health, welfare, and safety of the community. And that's what we're trying to do tonight, is to show you, we did try to minimize it. I don't think the, and I respect Denise, and I think she did a great memo of law. On a lot of those points, you know, they are completely relevant. However, just because something is stated doesn't mean that that's the way it has to be for the future. Essentially, to have people buy a property and have no expectation that they can do anything that requires relief, I think is unreasonable as grant, waiving all the variance standards whatsoever. So, I do think that there's a balancing test, and that's what I'm asking the board to participate in today. The Waters Edge case that Denise did attach, that had bluff crest setbacks. I mean, there were a lot of other moving parts to that. So, you know, I do think you have to reevaluate this, and the best precedent we have is the application that was in front of the board. Things have changed since 1982. I'm not even sure if building code is the same with respect to the required head heights. And my misstatement about the second bedroom, the one bedroom on this property is used more or less as a home office. So, I always consider that, you know, on a small cottage, I guess it is, in fact, the bedroom, but I didn't mean to misrepresent it. I just understood that there was one bedroom and that she was seeking to add some more space for another bedroom, essentially to accommodate the caregiver. I do think it is possible, looking at this, that we might be able to improve on this design a little bit in terms of the pyramid compliance, at least with respect to one side. I think it is going to reduce the size of this residence. So, I'd like some time to be able to actually talk to the designer or the draftsman and see just how that would impact. I think when we presented this plan initially, I don't think any of us foresaw that we would have this kind of community opposition. I guess that's my mistake for not understanding that in this area, anything can be controversial. But Bethany's intent was never to come in and have an application that was opposed this widely. I do think we can try to mitigate some of these areas. I just don't know how much we can do and still come up with a workable solution. With respect to the vegetation and the screening, that can be a condition of the board's approval, and we would certainly have no qualms about accepting a requirement that we maintain a vegetated screen and see that it remains on-site. That's very common throughout the town. Although things die, you're expected to replant them to try to maintain that vegetative buffer on this property.
Did you get this memorandum of law today as well?
I just got handed it.
Oh, you just got it, too?
Yeah, I got it at the same time.
You need time to respond?
Well, I mean, I think I would like some time to respond, but what I'd like to respond with is seeing if I can come up with a, some kind of a mitigation of the plan. It's suggested in this that we can. I need to speak to my designer to see that if, in fact, we can accomplish that. And I'd like to be able to respond to that by coming in with a plan that tries to, you know, address some of the points here. And, you know, basically, see what can be done to minimize based on the suggestions made in the memo, which I think is fair to us because if they had approached me before the meeting and said, hey, I think you can go down to three feet, I probably would have tried to do that. However, to flip your cards on the table, obviously, is not advantageous, obviously. So, I just think in fairness, I'd like to be able to see if we can address them by a redesign and be able to address those points based on the ability to do that or the inability to do that.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard on this application? Yeah, let's, let me hear one more public comment, and then we'll, we'll talk. Yes, ma'am? Just state your name and spell it for the record.
My name is Patricia Arcieri, A-R-C-E-R-I. I don't understand, the town says pyramid law, and yet, people can get away with using it. You know, you make a law, and you should buy by it. And I don't see where there should be any way that you can go around it on this particular cottage.
Okay. As Mr. Hammer said, the town does have a code.
Yes.
And our laws, but the town also has a zoning board of appeals.
Yes.
Which means that this board is here to hear applicants that may need.
I understand that.
And that's why we're here tonight.
Yes. As I said, we have lived out here 50 years. I've raised five children out here. I had a lot next door to me that put in 11 feet of sill. You want to know where the water went? Into my cellar. I have two sump pumps, and it still cannot keep up. Thank heavens, we had a dry winter and a dry spring, and let's hope it stays that way. But I'm just saying, there are things that happen, and I just don't understand how you can set a law. And as you're saying, Mr. Hammer is looking into it. I just thought I'd like to say, I hope everything works out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Hammer? I know you just got Ms. Shern's memorandum of law tonight, and I'm sure you'd like to take a look at that. And you've also indicated that you'd like a little time to look into the design and see what could be done to mitigate what has been proposed up till now.
And I think that's suggested by the memorandum, that there are ways to do that, and I'd like to explore that. I think that's a reasonable response, is to see what would actually can be done, to see if there is a way that we can improve this.
Mr. Cirillo?
Yeah, how much time, Counselor, do you think you would need for this one?
I'd say a week.
Another week?
Yeah.
With that in mind, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion similar to the one I just made the last time.
Close of public hearing.
Which would be to close. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Hang on. Do you want to respond to your memorandum to?
I just want to, you know, if there's going to be a revised proposal, we definitely want to have the opportunity to look at it and comment on it. And there's a million different approaches that, obviously, they could take that may or may not be beneficial to the clients.
Okay.
So, you would need a week as well?
If, yes, please.
Okay.
And I know this isn't your standard practice, but I'd really, I mean, I'd really like the opportunity to do, to address you personally as opposed to in papers. I mean, I want to.
That would mean keeping the public hearing open.
Right. I mean, it's a new application. I don't even know what he's coming in with.
Counsel?
I think Ms. Shern's right, correct? Like, we'd have to keep the public hearing open.
That's fine.
If there's a new application coming in.
That's fine. Would we have a continuation?
Does that have to be noticed again?
Does it have continuation? Depends.
Well, it's, no, it's going to be continuing this public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. So, instead of closing, instead of a motion to close this public hearing, how about, how about a motion to extend it for two weeks to allow, or one week for counsel for the applicant and one week for counsel for the neighbors to respond back and forth and?
But then it's got to be rescheduled. We have to fit it in.
I think we have to pick the date now.
You could pick a date. I just don't know what you, what your calendar holds.
Yeah, I don't know what our, I don't know what our calendar looks like right now.
Can I address the question?
Well, we can close it, we can close it and schedule it later.
No, we can't close it. It's a continuation.
You know, ordinarily, I would say, first off, I think it's clear to me that whatever I come in with, it's going to be less relief than we're requesting tonight to say that, you know, this is.
Yeah, I was going to say.
And I'm going to peer in my crystal ball and say that if I request any relief, Ms. Shern and her clients are going to oppose my relief. So, you know, I don't think that we're exactly divining the great, the great divide here. I know exactly what's going to happen. What I'm going to try to do is minimize the relief that I can seek here, or maybe I won't be able to based on the comments of the designer. And I suspect that what's going to happen is they're going to oppose that. I don't know why that needs to be done in front of the board, but if you are to continue this, what I'd, what I'd suggest is we continue it at a work session so that we're not being scheduled on the same night as public hearings. Because realistically, I think the, I'm going to explain what I did. Denise is going to get up and say, I oppose that because it's relief from the zoning code, and that's essentially all we need for purposes of our application in front of the board on the continuation.
Ms. Shern, what do you think about doing it at a work session?
That's totally fine with me. I just want the opportunity to speak to you.
The next work session is May 8th. Next week happens to be a work session, and I think that might be too tight a timeframe for both of you. So, May 8th is the next available work session. Would that be amenable to both of you?
That's amenable to me, absolutely.
Yes, Counsel? Mr. Hammer?
That's fine. I'll be prepared to receive the answer on May 8th.
No, I'm not, you know, that's not fair, Andy. I got retained on Friday. I did the best I could to put something together for tonight's hearing. I told you I was coming. I made you aware of the opposition. So, it's not like I waited till the last second. I was hired on Friday, and I worked through the weekend.
And then we'll hold it till?
So, no, I'm not going to give it to you on the 8th. I'm going to give it to you on the date that the board tells me to give it to you.
Which I was about to give her.
All right. Ms. Cirillo, why don't you make a motion?
Okay. This will give Counsel Hammer until the, one week, which is the 10th, and Ms. Shern a week after that, which is April 17th. And then we will meet at a work session on May 8th.
Right.
I just wanted to clarify. I didn't mean that Denise was going to give me her answer that day, and that's when we're going to have the second part, which is I'm going to present the revised.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion.
Do you need a continuation of this public hearing?
Yeah, at the, at the work session.
Yes.
We have a motion on, on the floor.
Yes, I just, I just made that motion.
Somebody second that?
I second that.
Hang on, maybe not. All right, we have a motion of second to give each attorney a week and schedule a continuation of the public hearing at the work session on May 8th. Brian?
I concur.
And I also, that's 5:00 to do that.
You're good, Denise? Counsel?
Do you think that we can appear at the work session?
They're open to a public.
It's open to the public.
It's open to the public, but you can only speak if.
Yeah. I think the rules are a little different, but we'll make sure.
At a work session, it's, by invite.
Thank you for coming.
You get that, Denise, right? April 10th for him, April 17th for? Close of business.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to our last public hearing for the evening. Okay, our third public hearing is that of Cynthia Rowley. This is a 40,000-square-foot parcel at 31 Ditch Plains Road, Seaside Shores, map number 1518, block 604, lots 15 and 16 in Montauk. Tax map number 30003205-09. Description of the project is to remove an existing residence and to construct an approximately 2,102-square-foot residence with a 624-square-foot, square feet of first and second-story decking, an upgraded sanitary system, and relocated driveway within the town's jurisdiction of freshwater wetlands. The relief sought is a natural resources special permit of 255-4-20 of the town code, and three variances from 255-4-30 of the town code are required. Two variances of 19 feet and one variance of 15 feet are required to construct the residence, decking, and sanitary system 81 and 135 feet from the freshwater wetlands, where 100 and 150-foot setbacks are required respectively, and any other relief necessary. The zoning district is B Residence, Zone X Flood Zone, and the secret class is a type Counsel, do we have an affidavit of service and posting?
I haven't reviewed them yet. I'm going to review them.
Ah, okay. Got a long wait, sir.
I've reviewed the affidavit of service and posting for your hearing. All appears to be in order. Handing the same to the board for inclusion in the file.
Yep. Hey, this property is in Montauk, and Member Gosman, do you have a field report for us this evening?
Yeah, I visited the Rowley property last week and also, again, yesterday. The official notice was posted clearly both days. I also took several photos that show the area of relief. And the first photo I have is just of the official notice. And the second is looking east across from Ditch Plains Road. The third is the northwest corner with a proposed septic, which is in the front yard. And photo four is looking east from the backside of the house, which is just an arrow showing the wetlands. And photo five is looking west from the wetland area and the backside of the house. And photo six is just basically what runs through a lot of the areas of Ditch Plains, which is these, I guess, drainage ditches that run all through the area of Ditch Plains I also, I, just looking over the survey and stuff, I just noticed that the applicant seemed to try to put the house as, almost in its existing area, which is as close, almost as close to the road as I think they could possibly get with it. So, and I also think that the, you know, the added square footage and stuff like that, it's not out of the character of the neighborhood, so.
Any questions for Mr. Gosman?
No.
No.
I actually went out myself and looked at it.
Okay. Mr. Hammer? Nice to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Land use law should not be blood sports, so, but essentially, tonight, I'm here representing the applicant who owns a property on Ditch Plains Road. I think this actually, the house that's on this property, I've seen it in an Architectural Digest magazine from 1962. I think it was like one of the original, you know, Montauk beach cottages. It says here that it's approximately 800 square feet. Having been in it, I can't even imagine it's 800 square feet. I was always under the impression that it was smaller than that. So, I'm not sure if that's just because my eye was drawn out when I was in there, but it is, it's an extremely small cottage, essentially. I think Member Gosman picked up on the fact that what we tried to do is locate this as far as possible from, as close to the road. The reason it's actually set 25 feet from the road is because of the sanitary system upgrades that we have on the lot. These are very interesting lots in some respects because they're so deep. As a matter of fact, it's kind of difficult to even figure out who you have to notice when you're doing these types of things because it actually carries over on the tax map. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Land use law should not be blood sports, so, but essentially, tonight, I'm here representing the applicant who owns a property on Ditch Plains Road. I think, this actually, the house that's on this property, I've seen it in an Architectural Digest magazine from 1962. I think it was like one of the original, you know, Montauk beach cottages. It says here that it's approximately 800 square feet. Having been in it, I can't even imagine it's 800 square feet. I was always under the impression that it was smaller than that, so I'm not sure if that's just because my eye was drawn out when I was in there, but it is a, it's an extremely small cottage, essentially. I think, remember Gosman picked up on the fact that what we tried to do is locate this as far as possible from, as close to the road. The reason it's actually set 25 feet from the road is because of the sanitary system upgrades that we have on the lot. These are very interesting lots in some respects because they're so deep. As a matter of fact, it's kind of difficult to even figure out who you have to notice when you're doing these types of things because it actually carries over on the tax map, so you have to try to figure out who lives on the other side of the road, and looking at those maps, it's, it's not readily apparent exactly where you fit in, so we spent a little bit of time trying to figure that out. One thing that's, that's apparent about this lot is it's a big lot. It's, you know, an acre in size, essentially, and it's, and it's very deep. Off the road, it's 400 foot deep. It's more or less bisected by the ditch and the wetlands, so there are, there actually is, I'd say, an equivalent building envelope on the rear of the property. However, to get there, you would have to go over the wetlands, so it's not really a, a very attractive building envelope from that perspective, and I think the, looking at the aerial photos, essentially, this backs up to all the residences on the other side. So, there actually is a nice uncleared buffer area in there. I think this property has a little bit of clearing up to the stream or the ditch, whatever you want to call it, but the, the balance of it is, is more or less completely undisturbed, which is kind of an interesting thing. So, when we did try to cite the new residence, we took it and put it more or less in the existing, you know, where the existing residence, I do know I see one of the neighbors here who I've dealt with before about the, the hedge, and I think that's what we were proposing. We're proposing to do a sanitary system upgrade, or it's essentially a new sanitary system because it's a new house. The house that's there is just not capable of redevelopment, per se. I think it's poured on a slab, and it dates back, as I said, to, you know, the 70s, so, you know, from a building code perspective, we tried to look at that as an option because the, the owner thought there was some architectural significance to having the first beach cottage, but I think every builder and designer who looked at it said, "I don't think there's anything all that historic about the existing structure." You know, I will say that the, the structure that we redesigned, it's still a fairly modest sized structure. It's 2,100 square feet on essentially an acre property. We did try to realize, and, and I think we got a very good setback from the wetland for the sanitary at 135 feet. You know, 150 foot is what's required, so we need a 15 foot variance, but that's literally as far as we could get, the, the septic system from the wetlands. I, I seem to remember, I might have triangulated a better area in the rear of the property, but obviously, that isn't going to be a viable option for us to consider. The coverage on the site's only going from 3.34% to 4.87%, which are fairly small numbers. A lot of that's because we have a modest house, and, and it's also benefited by the fact that we have a very large, large house on the, or, large lot that we're placing a fairly modest house on it. Other than that, I just make myself available for questions. I do think we tried to maximize as best as possible all of the setbacks, and even 81 feet that we're showing for the, the deck, that's, you know, I think it's, it's all within the realm of what I consider an improvement over the existing property. I would be willing to consider, you know, the establishment of a vegetated buffer adjacent to the wetlands, but, you know, you can just tell from the development we're proposing that the rear of the property is going to remain undisturbed, and I think that's a very good thing.
Counsel, are they doing anything with that other small building, and they're going to renovate that in any way?
I think that was renovated at some point in the past. I'm not, you know, it's a, last time I was there, it was stored with, you know, it was filled with stuff, basically. I think there's an outdoor shower on the outside of it as well. All right, well, they were probably used illegally as sleeping quarters at the, you know, back in the day.
Sure, that's why I'm asking, because...
It, it has no, you know, my rec, when I actually was there, it was a storage room, so, you know, and it probably is today, but it was an accessory outbuilding, and it was such a small house, I think, I don't even know precisely when this applicant acquired the property, but, you know, before that, I think it was used as kind of a beach house with, "Oh, look, we have a garage you can sleep in" kind of thing, so, you know, the, the alternative here is that we're going to try to build a reasonable sized house that would accommodate all the use.
You mentioned the hedge. You're going to move that east of the...
Yeah, if you look at the survey, it says it's to be relocated north of the property line on...
Yeah, but I'm talking about along Ditch Plains Road. The hedge is in the roadway.
You know what? That isn't located on the survey.
Well, I, we were there and we kind of marked it out, so it seems that way. I mean, roughly, we're not, you know, it wasn't located on the survey, but I know, I think that's what his concern is.
Okay.
Because when you come out of his driveway, it kind of blocks the view.
Yeah, and I think that was one of the concerns that's consistently been raised is about, there was a hedge installed there, I want to say a year ago, year and a half ago, three years ago? It's been that long? Boy, I've been doing this too long. But I do remember working with the, the neighbor and talking to the town highway department, and I, I would assume that that was resolved, but, you know, planting within, within road right of ways isn't really regulated by the highway department unless it's offensive, and in this case, it would have been offensive for visibility, so I do believe some of that was removed, and I'd certainly be willing to hear if there's something that the, the neighbor has that the board could consider as a part of the approval or...
You're proposing to remove the hedge in its entirety?
Well, the hedge, that's certainly along the whole side. You know, there's some plantings along here, and I, actually, I did go by there Sunday to try and take a look at it. It looked like there was a yard sale going on in the front yard or something, so I didn't want to get out of the car and really inspect it, but, you know, obviously, a lot of the vegetation that's, that's been planted along that side yard is going to have to come out just to gain access for the sanitary system.
In that notation, it says it's going to be moved north of the property line, so it's going to be moved onto his property?
No, it certainly...
I didn't understand.
I think the hedge, maybe the hedge that it's talking about goes right through the sanitary system. I'm assuming that what they were planning on doing is when they, they excavate it rather than ripping it out, they were going to ball it and move it up along the property line.
And that's that same property line, but further north?
Yes.
No, driveway's being proposed.
Part of his driveway.
I bel, I believe the neighboring lot, fortunately, we don't have the aerial here. My recollection is that's their, their driveway is...
Put on the survey, which I don't understand.
We may have an aerial, yeah.
But I think it encroaches a little bit into his.
All right, which ones, which one am I, oh, the blue one. Oh, okay, there you go. So, this, this gives you a little bit better pictograph. I'll submit this as...
And there you can see that's the existing cottage, essentially. The driveway is hard up on it. As a matter of fact, I think it does encroach a little bit.
Yeah, it's...
So, you're moving, and that is the entire, the rear of the property. This whole area is basically undisturbed.
It's long and deep.
Okay, so this is where the, this is where the hedge is now that it encroaches.
Hedge and driveway, Viro.
No, he's, that is that hedge. That's about right, because we were out there, we kind of marked it off on the field. It's tough because I don't know why, but he didn't locate this driveway on the survey, and it's usually, I don't know why he didn't, usually they...
It's only an encroachment.
Yeah, they did.
Let me just flip through my file. I might have another survey that is the existing conditions that might be somewhat relevant.
See, this is the hedge that he's, see how it's like up to here, and when you back out, you can't even see. I mean, I don't know if this is 100% accurate, but...
Yeah, it doesn't, I don't appear to have an existing condition survey that would show it. I do have some photos of the residence. If you've never been there, it's quite lovely. It's interesting, so.
It's a very Art Deco look, though.
Oh, absolutely.
Kind of like a South Beach look. All right, any questions for Mr. Hammer on this board?
No.
Thank you.
Pretty straightforward.
Sir, would you like to speak? You've been here all night. Step to the podium and state your name and spell it for the record.
Tom Dunphy. D as in David, U N as in Nancy, F as in Frank, E E. 27 Ditch Plains. My wife and I own 20, my wife, Lorraine. I feel a little funny here tonight. Everybody else that's gotten up here's got a complaint. I haven't a complaint about the, any of the variances that he wants. I, that's your job. I, I'm not opposed to any of it. Two things that I have a question, a question on one thing and a request on the other. The question is the septic, the location of the septic. I don't know if anybody's familiar. I know the two members from Montauk are familiar with Ditch Plain Road, but it's, I don't know about the rest of you, but there's an awful lot of water on Ditch Plain Road. In front of the applicant's house is a sump, and it will be, I don't know, you, maybe you could... Town sump? Yeah, it's town sump, yeah. Dry well, and, and it's going to be 10 feet from, approximately 10 feet from the...
Can I look at that?
It'll be approximately 10 feet from the septic rings. Directly across the street from that one, the highway superintendent, Russo, put another sump, and then to the north of that is a third. So, there's three dry wells within, well, one within 10 feet, the other one within 30 feet of her rings. When my wife and I purchased the property 28, 29 years ago, we always had water. Ditch Plain, it's, it's a ditch, so, but we only pumped April, May, parts of June. I pump 12 months, 12 months in a year now. With those sumps, it's in clay, and it doesn't percolate down. It moves out. So, when I, we get a lot of rain, my sump pumps running continually, there's actually a stream that runs through the southeast corner of my house, southwest corner of my house. It actually flows. You can stand there and watch the water running through it. So, now, the location of the septic system, not opposed to the septic system, not opposed to anything she wants to do, I'm just wondering, I don't want any of the septic waste, the effluvial odors to, you know, get into my house. Now, I don't know where she can put the septic. I don't know, and I, and it might not even be a problem. I'm not a hydrologist. I don't really know. All I'm, all I'm wondering is, is there some way of finding out, or could the septic system that, the place, could it be moved to the other side?
I can actually answer that question.
Okay.
At least address it.
Yeah.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Dunphy?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
You mentioned the hedge.
Yes.
I was, Mr. Hammer and I have been talking about this for a year and a half, the hedge, and it might have been four years now, but the hedge, the woman put the hedge right out to the highway, right out to Ditch Plain Road. It was this far off from the road. I went to the superintendent, or I went to her, didn't go to superintendent, went to her, and I says, "Come on, you can't do that. I can't, you're back out of my property and you can't see traffic," because the hedge is as thick, you know, in, in the summertime. And Ditch Plain Road, if anybody's been on it in the summertime, they go up and down that road like it's a speedway. Can't see, you're backing out. Last summer, I almost got clipped myself. I don't know where liability would lie if the town is going to allow her to have the hedge on, it's in, and it's only about three, four feet from the road, where the property line is about 15, 20 feet from the edge of the highway. Ditch Plain Road, I believe, is a 75-foot right of way, one of the wider streets in town. Now, I'm assuming that the town would only recognize 50 feet, but still. Her answer to me was, "Well, everybody else does it." Well, everybody else doesn't do it. I didn't do it. The woman to the south of her didn't do it. The people to the south of her, the other neighbor didn't do it. The people to the north of me didn't do it. No one did it. She did it. And I asked her as a neighbor, "Move it back." She moved it back this far. Mr. White was on the, I, he was in the neighborhood. I happened to see him. We talked about it, and I showed him where the original planning was. She moved it two feet more away from the road, but it doesn't make any difference. I have to back, when you back out of it, somebody's going to get clipped. Last year, about a year and a half ago, saw Mr. Hammer at the post office, and where you see everybody, you know, either that or the dump, but I had said to him, "I'm going to, I'm going back to the highway superintendent. We got to get this taken care of," and he says, "That's, we're not, we're not worried about it because she's going to sell the property and then we're going to move the hedge." Well, that was a year and a half ago. Last summer, I had a deal with the hedge all summer long. She never sold the property, whether she couldn't sell it or she didn't want it. She purchased another property, I saw, and I think that she was going to move to it, and that the hedge would be moved, but we're still sitting there with the hedge. And so, my request is, before any building permit or any variances allowed, and again, I'm not opposed to any of her variances. Only question where the septic system is, and that may not even be a problem because I, again, I don't know if anything's going to come about that. I don't think she should be given any variance until that hedge is moved. Somebody's going to get hurt, and I don't want it to be me. She's not worried about it. So, that's all I, you know, and again, not opposed to what he wants.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Dunphy on this board?
No.
What'd you say, first name, please?
First name?
Tom.
Tom, that's what it was. Sorry, I missed it.
Thank you, Mr. Dunphy.
Thank you.
Mr. Borzac?
Tyler Borzac from the Planning Department. Just want to touch upon just the property briefly. Approximately half of the project is within variance setback jurisdiction. The rest is within NRSB jurisdiction. The wetlands in the area consist of a drainage ditch that runs through several properties in the area. The wetlands throughout Ditch Plains consist mainly of several ditches, marches, and swamps interspersed with lawns and culverts. Water flows south and continues south and east. Some of the water seeps, seeps through the bluffs in the area of Reinstein Park, and the rest ends up flowing into the southern end of Lake Montauk. As part of the project, the sanitary system is proposed to be upgraded to five-pole system, 135 feet from the wetlands. The board should discuss if this is sufficient mitigation to warrant a large increase in the size of the house on the property. The board should, could consider a no-mow zone, approximately 50 feet from the rear of the current clearing as more mitigation if they felt that was necessary. Also, the proposed driveway should be composed of pervious material or have drainage structures that are approved by the town engineer. I did speak with Mr. Dunphy yesterday regarding the septic system and his concerns with it. I spoke with a couple of people in our office. Essentially, nobody's sure. Nobody's a sanitary engineer, so we can't really say for sure. The best guess is it probably won't affect that, but I know that's not an answer that's really appropriate. It would probably, you know, take an engineer who's more, more familiar with this type of...
And the Health Department doesn't analyze that?
Would the South County Health Department have to approve it?
Yeah, exactly. The Health Department should look into stuff like that, and if they analyze that sort of... It, it should function properly, but, you know, we're not experts on this sort of thing, so.
Questions for Mr. Borzac?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Hammer? You sounded like you had something to say about the septic system.
Well, you know what? If there's one thing I know, it's septic systems, sir. I've become very familiar with how they function. Essentially, you know, one of the, the concerns here is the perch water table and the clay in the soil in Ditch Plains. I mean, that's a prevalent complaint. If you look at our test hole on this property, you'll see it's about a 20, we'll add it up, 6, 7, 8. It looks like it's about 28 to 29 feet till you get to clean substrate there. Although Long Island, because it was deposited by glaciers, is built over sand, essentially. The question is, how far do you have to go to reach it? Now, if you do reach it, and we're in front of the Health Department, our permit is going to be subject to a witness test hole excavation, and what they'll require is us to dig until we hit that clean sand substrate and then backfill it with clean sand material. What that does is create a hydrostatic connection between the sanitary system and the hydraulic head, and it charges down to, through the, the layers of clay that are prohibiting the town's sumps from actually draining properly. Essentially, when they put those catch basins in, they don't seek to establish a hydrostatic connection to the, the subsurface materials. Those sumps, depending on how they're installed or when they're installed, they basically are, are catch basins that hold water, and it's allowed to percolate side to side, and, you know, a lot of times, what you get are perch water tables in Ditch Plains where you have water on top of clay, and then underneath it, it's dry, so, you know, you get this migration of, of water, so the water doesn't actually go away when it goes into a sump. It just can vertically or horizontally migrate, whereas a sanitary system is designed to function properly and have a, you know, hydrostatic connection so that the effluent is processed properly and doesn't go off in the side. Basically, water will throw, flow through the path of least resistance. If you have these clay lenses, it's not going to go sideways because it's going to want to go down, which is the easiest way. As a matter of fact, sometimes, when you install these things, I've been told that it does address some of the drainage in the areas because with the non-conforming sanitary systems, you're creating a new outlet for water to actually drain down into the substrate where it should be going rather than being trapped. With respect to the hedge, I think Tom and I have had many... With respect to the hedge, I think Tom and I have had many conversations about the hedge in the past, you know, and I, and I think when I saw him in the post office, my answer isn't, "Well, I don't really care about the hedge." I think it really came down to, "Hey, we have a couple of things that are unique here." One is that property or that, his driveway is hard up on that property line. It might even be over eight foot. I can't remember exactly. That creates an interesting condition in and of itself. The hedge that's there, my intention was always to, you know, "That sounds like a Highway Department issue." You know, it's kind of funny to me, because tonight you had, you know, a group of people that stood up and said, "We don't like people clearing vegetation along the roadway." Here, it's, you know, "We'd like our roadways to be unobstructed, AKA devoid of vegetation." And that's, that's just, I think, inherent in, you know, different areas of the town have different standards. But if there was a way to relocate that hedge onto the property, and this board thought it was a sufficient condition of approval, I would certainly pass that along to the applicant, essentially. That's all I'm saying on that, that issue, is that, you know, there probably is a better location for it to go. And with all the construction activity here, that would probably be a reasonable opportunity to try and gain it. I think it was planted originally for privacy concerns, because these are fairly close to the road. I think Mr. Dunphy said it best, ditch plains isn't like it was 30 years ago. It's a fairly major highway. In a, on a, on a summer day, there's lots of people moving up and down that, going to the various beaches and residences in that area. So I think that was the intent behind it. But, you know, these things grow, and I'm sure that, you know, since in the four years we've talked about it, it probably has become more of an onerous thing that, you know, has visual impact that was initiated when it was first installed.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Hammer?
And the town, the town does regulate vegetation, incidentally, on corner lots, which, for this exact very reason. So, you know, it's just kind of strange to have one on a straightaway where, you know, it does impede visual.
Any other questions for Mr. Hammer?
No.
Mr. Dunphy, I think you need to, you have to, you've got to go up to the podium. State your name again for the record.
I don't want it to sound like I'm arguing with Mr. Hammer, okay? We have different recollections. It's privet, first off. We're not talking about vegetation that's indigenous to here. We're talking about privet that she put on town property. We're not talking, it was clear before. I'm not sure if Mr. Hammer is aware of that, but there wasn't anything there. There's nothing in front of my house. I didn't mean to shout. There's nothing in front of my house. And I understand she wants privacy. And if she wants privacy, she should have privacy. Move the head back, move the hedge back to her, to her property line. I planted one tree on the property line. I didn't plant a hedge. You can't see, and he said that I'm on the, I'm on her, my driveway's on her property. We've talked about this for almost two years, a year and a half.
You guys have done a lot of talking.
Yeah, we have. First off, he's, I don't, I have no complaint with Mr. Hammer. A year and a half, we've talked about the driveway on her property, and every time I've spoken to him, I've said to him, "Andy, give me the damn survey. Tell me, show me where the, where I'm on her property." And we haven't, there's no, there's no pin, there's nothing. I've never seen a survey where my driveway's... And listen, if my driveway's on her property, if you show it today, I'm on her driveway. Tomorrow, I'll have somebody over there to move the driveway. I don't want to be on her property, and I don't want her on town property. That's all. You can't see backing out of that driveway, whether I'm on her property or not. If, if I'm on her property, the hedge doesn't allow me to see traffic coming from the beach. If I move my driveway, she's moving the hedge. There's no solution to that. She's got to move everything back to the property line, period. And I just would like to reiterate, she was going to sell the house, never sold the house, for whatever the reason. So the hedge has, so now, last year, we had the hedge in the summertime. If it's going to be the same system, we'll have the hedge again this summer by the time she starts to build and everything, and I don't want that. I would like you to say, move the hedge before you can do anything. I, it's dangerous, it really is. And I'll move the driveway. Show me the survey, okay? And I'll move the driveway if that's on her property. And I'd like to know about the septic, too, if there's something that, if somebody can find out if the septic system is going to affect us. Mr. Hammer said something about, I think with the water table, he's been talking about the water table. The boring that was done there was done in July, and this is what, the second or third driest year that we've had in recorded history? So water tables are down, you know? Typically ditch plains, you can almost kick the, kick the ground and find running water. So I pump 12 months of the year with mine.
Thank you, Mr. Dunphy. You want to finish this up, Ben?
Yeah, just a closing comment is, you know, the hedge, I'm not sure whether there's any encroachment or not, and that doesn't address the key issue that he's raising here, which is, it's a visual impediment, and it's creating a safety issue there. So, you know, I think the board's amply aware of that, and if there's a way that you can address it, I certainly would support your being able to do it. And in terms of the groundwater table, it does show groundwater, let me just see here. It shows the groundwater at about six foot down. You know, ditch plains does have a variable groundwater table, and I think actually in those summer months, it actually has a positive water table, because water is being used. It's the same situation in Beach Hampton, so there, over the summer, I do think there's probably millions of gallons being introduced in that area that doesn't fall as, as rainwater. So I think that does add to some of the perception that water tables rise in the summertime as well. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. I think we have enough information to be able to make a decision, so at this point, I would entertain a motion. Brian?
Yeah, make a motion to close the hearing, yeah.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second to close the public hearing?
Concur. Concur.
And I also concur. So that takes care of our public hearings for this evening. We have 62 days, as you know, Mr. Hammer, to make a decision and be notified, the applicant will be notified by mail. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging in there, Mr. Dunphy. Okay. Takes care of the public hearing portion of our meeting type. It's, it's a little after 10:00. We don't have much to do here, so I'd rather just get it done. Let's see here. The minutes, as you know, were given out tonight in draft form. Will everybody take a look at them, and what we'll do is, we will take care of it at the work session next week. I do have some extensions of time. I have five of them. I'd like to read them and have them approved, if that's okay, in their entirety. The first one is... Backwards here.
You know what, it might be this one. This is...
It's a different name that's on you?
Yeah. They got it on your...
Oh, yeah, okay. Thanks for seeing that. It's Arnold Buck, Susan Axelbank, now new owner. This is on South Greenwich Street in Montauk, and they're looking for an extension of time to get the building permit and the certificate of occupancy. I don't think anything's been done. The second one is Peter Nicholas, not on your agenda, but the second one that I have is Peter Nicholas. This property is on Oyster Shores Road in East Hampton, and they're also looking for additional time to get the building permit and certificate of occupancy. The third one is James Zajac. This is on Old Stone Highway in Springs, and for the same reason, they're looking for additional time, building permit, certificate of occupancy. The fourth one, Alan Hecht. This is in Marine Boulevard in Amagansett. Again, building permit, certificate of occupancy. And the last one is BPGA Realty. This property is on Beach Palm Lane in Amagansett, and they're also looking for an extension of time for building permit and certificate of occupancy. And if I could have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, that all extensions of time be continued, considered in their entirety.
I second.
Passed as, as requested.
Second, Mr. White?
I second.
Concur?
Concur.
Concur.
Send these out. Send these, this one. You guys can switch here. Rose down. Okay. That's done. 260A LLC. I think there's been some movement with regard to the building inspector getting out to make a determination. You want to just fill us in, counsel?
I believe Mr. Priaud is going to have a determination within 10 days.
Okay. All right, so after our next work session, and as soon as we get that determination, we can get this thing scheduled for a public hearing, and hopefully within 10 days. Shepherd's Neck Point Revegetation Plan. Tyler, do you have anything on that? Don't have anything. Okay, we'll table that till next week. And Mr. Stavola on the pool, we looked in the file, he's asking, Mr. Priaud is asking for a letter, see if everything's done, to get a CO. It's not. These still covenants and restrictions are still outstanding, so we're letting the building inspector know that it's not ready. And the last thing here is Young in Lemieux. Got a letter on, dated March 28th, from Chris Kelly, asking us, they're granting us an additional time to, to issue a decision. Basically, what they've done is they've applied to the DEC for a different type of revetment that supposedly will protect the claimant's property as well as their property. We do have a determination to sign tonight. I would, if the board would like, I would not mind, you know, taking a look at that. But I think in, after talking with counsel, I think what we should do is, we should sign the determination to reflect what we did and have them come in with a new application, because it's got to be approved by the DEC first, and who knows how long that can take. So that would be my suggestion, but this is an Amagansett property?
No, I don't have, I've read the letter, and he asked for an extension to 60 days because, counsel, I think he was trying to keep it open with a modification, but I don't think that's going to work quite, because the modification is actually fairly fundamental.
Exactly.
So I think it's, I think it necessitates, Mr. Chair, a full new application.
Correct, and, and I don't want to keep it open, open-ended, and the DEC works...
I mean, I'm sympathetic to 60K request, but you know what? It'll probably take 60 days for him to make the new application anyway, so...
Do we need a motion to, to do that?
No, I think, I think, sign the determination.
By signing the determination?
That is our, that is our motion, which, after you give me, I haven't had a chance to actually...
The same one that was circulated last week with the...
No change, just the correction?
The typograph.
That's fine. In that case, then I make a motion here to have the Young in Lemieux, a determination made as a, as previously discussed and advised to counsel, where we asked him to, to make a few minor changes.
I second.
You second, Lee White second?
We have a motion and second to approve the determination as written.
Concur.
Judge Gosman?
Concur.
Karen?
Yes.
Concur also. Do you have more for us?
I do. I have the Denson determination, which was also circulated last week, but I made that change. Yes.
Okay, while everybody's signing that, this is the determination for Michael Denson. This is the pool and decking on Oyster Shores Road in East Hampton. And this is for the approval of, these variances requested with the condition that the vegetation be done prior to the issuance of a building permit to make sure that it gets done, because the house is for sale, and we want to make sure that the vegetation gets done before that pool is in, because the new owner, if they're, for whatever reason, were able to close on it without the proper CO, it might not get done. So I make a motion to the effect that we approve this with that caveat in it.
I second it.
I concur.
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 Okay. You have anything else?
No, that's it for this evening.
That's it for this evening? All right, so once we get these things signed, that's done. Okay, you want to sign that? You need these, Denise, these determinations? They go to you? Or do they, they do, right?
Yeah. Do we, we didn't, we didn't close? I have the Denson file, the, Ellen took...
I'll put it in the yellow folder.
No, because it reads like it's...
For each.
Right, right, okay.
Yeah, we're not, we're not ready, just for the record, Wayne Scott Wambles is still open, the record's still open, so...
Till April 16.
Till April 16, so we won't, we won't be able to take it up at our next work session.
I was going to say, this is incorrect.
We just have the one that we closed.
No, I'm talking about the last week.
No, no, I'm just saying, the work session is very short.
Right, we only have one for next week.
Correct.
All right, so...
Will you entertain a motion to close?
I absolutely will.
I would like to do that. Make a motion to close, please.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Concur.
Concur.
We're closed. Thank you, everyone. All right.